Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the May tenth. Meeting of the Jersey City Planning Board. If you could come to order, please, and join me in a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic. One nation, under God, visible, liberty, and justice for all. All right. Thank you, everybody. Could we have a sunshine announcement, please?
Yes, okay. Good evening, everyone. Today is Tuesday, May tenth in the year 2022. This is a Jersey City Planning Board meeting with a scheduled 5:30 PM start time. This planning board meeting is being held virtually as a video conference that is open to the public. And in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this meeting has been given to the editor of the Jersey Journal, the Jersey City Reporter, and posted with the city clerk on May sixth in the year 2022. This meeting was also posted on the Jersey City Division of City Planning Weapon, and all distribution materials made available to the board were published and available to the public.
All right. Thank you, Cam. Can we have a roll call, please?
And so.
You broke up there, Cam.
I think you said Commissioner Torres.
I heard Torres.
Commissioner Torres. Commissioner Allen.
Yeah.
Council President Waterman.
Here.
Commissioner Dr. Desai.
You're muted, Dr. Desai.
Yeah, here.
Commissioner Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez.
Here.
All right. And I see just joining us, we've got Commissioner Lipsky.
Here.
I hope you're not driving.
Hands free. I'll be home in 10 minutes and I'll switch over.
Let's.
I wouldn't miss this for the world.
Steve, let's, uh, let's catch up with you. We have no driving while, while you're in a meeting policy for everybody.
I have to check with Governor Murphy.
Okay.
Go ahead.
And Chairman Langston.
Here.
Okay, so we have six commissioners present. We have a quorum, and we will have a seventh commissioner coming as soon as they are parked.
All right.
Have a quorum.
All right. Thanks, Cam. Can we swear in the staff, please, Mike?
I see Liz, Mallory, Cameron, Francisco, Tim. Do you guys swear any testimony? You give tonight's going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Mike. Um, Cam, do we have correspondence?
Yes, we do. We have correspondence from two applicants. Both requesting to be carried to the May twenty fourth, their scheduled meeting. And with preservation of notice, so this is item twelve on the agenda. Address is two eighty-six to two ninety-six Cole Street. Case number is P twenty-two dash zero three one. They have requested to carry to May twenty-fourth with preservation of notice. And then we also have the last item on the agenda, item twenty, case number P twenty-two dash zero two nine. Address is thirty-five to forty-three Cottage Street. They have also requested to carry with preservation of notice to May twenty-fourth.
Cameron, that's without preservation of notice.
Okay, twenty is without preservation of notice.
They have to renotice.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Lipsky, can you just do me a favor? Log off, and when you get to your house or wherever you're headed, if you could log back on, that would be appreciated.
What I'll do is I'll turn off the video and I'll mute myself. I'll just listen, and when I get home, I'll log in.
Commissioner, the whole point is so that you're not distracted while you're moving, not because it distracts us. So I would hate to witness something horrible. Thank you, sir.
All right, so, um. Cam, let's run down the adjournments. We have a number adjourned tonight.
Yes.
You want to read them in? You want me to read them in, Cam?
Um, I'll do it because you're going to be talking a lot more than me tonight, so I'll do. Okay, so we have in total five items that are adjourning to a special meeting, which is to be held on Monday, May twenty-third in the year 2022. So I will give the case numbers and the addresses to the following five cases that are carrying to the special meeting on Monday, May twenty-third. So first case number is P twenty-two dash zero zero six. Address is six eleven Tunnelley Avenue. Second case is case number P twenty-two dash zero zero three. Address is thirty-two to thirty-four.
Cameron, I'm sorry. I'm so sorry, Cameron. Can you please tell us the name, the number on, on the current agenda? I'm sorry. I just, the way it's printed out for me, it's, if you can also name, please, sorry.
So on the agenda, item six in bold is all the adjournments. And then they are bulleted alphabetically, A through E. So we were on, we were on B, thirty-two to thirty-four Cottage Street. So A is six eleven Tunnelley Avenue, B is thirty-two to thirty-four Cottage Street, C is address two twelve to two thirty Culver Avenue, case number P twenty-one dash one twenty. D is case P twenty-one dash one one nine, address seventy Mallory Avenue. And lastly, the fifth item carried, E on the agenda, case number P twenty-one dash one sixty-two. Address is twenty-five Columbus Drive.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Yep.
Thanks, Cam.
Yep, that's the special meeting, Monday, May twenty-third.
So Chairman, for all members of the public, if you happen to have a copy of the agenda, number six on the agenda is entitled Adjournments. The cases that were just identified by the Secretary of the Board, A through E have all been carried. They will not be heard tonight. They will be heard on our special meeting of May twenty-third. That is a Monday night, not a Tuesday night, Monday night, May twenty-third. There will be no further notice for those five cases. In addition to those five cases, Cameron, you had called two other cases that have already been carried this evening.
Correct, but those are scheduled, uh, those are requesting to be carried to the regularly scheduled meeting of May twenty-fourth. And just for clarity, those are items twelve and items twenty. And the address is two eighty-six and ninety-six Cole Street. And the very last item on the agenda is carrying without preservation of notice. And that is item twenty, and that is address thirty-five to forty-three Cottage Street.
All right. Thanks, Cam. All right, so let's get into old business. Item seven, A, this case P two-two dash zero five one is an administrative amendment for Thirty Park Lane.
All right, I'm going to promote Ron Shalgin.
Evening.
Good evening, Counsel.
Good evening, Mr. Lappi, Chairman of the Board and members of the Board, Ronald Shalgin appearing on behalf of the applicant in this matter. Mr. Lappi, this is a notice case, I, I believe, and I, I sent a notice affidavit of publication and affidavit of service to Cameron early on. So I think the notice is, uh, is in your hands at this time.
It is. And Counsel, I'm in receiving your affidavit of publication proof of mailing with respect to the application, P two-two dash zero five one, Thirty Park Lane. All does appear to be in order. We're going to mark it as A1 for the record.
Thank you.
Chairman and members of the board, uh, this is an administrative amendment to a site plan that was originally approved January nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, bearing case P twenty dash oh seven nine. And thereafter, if the board may recall, we had to come back to the board once again because NJDEP had made some comments to the project, and we came back for an amendment on November twenty-third, uh, two thousand twenty-one under the same case number, and those revisions were approved by this board at that time. Between then and now, certain adjustments to the approved plans were required to be made, and I'll summarize them quickly. Initially, there was a desire for a two-story lobby, and that change resulted in a reduction in the unit count from three eighty-seven to three eighty-five, which is what we were requesting this evening. Likewise, because some internal features in the main amenity space on floor six changed, it was necessary to shift some of the windows to other locations as shown on the revised plans. Another revision was on the thirty-second and thirty-third floors, a four-bedroom unit was moved from the west side of the building to the east side of the building. And lastly, uh, for the precast garage elevations, due to supply chain issues, certain materials and colors were not readily available to meet the construction deadlines, and consequently, an alternative design was conceived for the east elevation with colors and materials as shown in our present submission of palettes, and these are immediately available for our construction. When we submitted the construction drawings that were previously approved by this board to the zoning official, he rejected those plans because of the changes that I already indicated to you. We are asking relief for this evening. So once a board, once the board approves these revisions, if they do so, we can pull a building permit and commence construction. I have the project architect on the call with me if you have any additional questions, but that is the sum and substance of the amendments that we're asking for tonight.
All right. Thank you, Counsel. And, um, the zoning official turned you down just because you needed planning board approval, correct?
That's right, for these changes.
Okay, yeah, I find that they're de minimis. If, if anybody else has any questions, um, now's your chance. Anybody from the board, anything?
No.
All right. Thank you, Counsel. I don't think there's anything.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I appreciate the opportunity to be heard. Thank you, Mr. Lappi.
Okay, thank you. Uh, all right, at this time, let's open it up for counsel comment. If anybody from the public wants to comment on this application, please raise your hand. And if you are calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hand. Anybody could comment on Thirty Park Lane?
Chair, I see no public. I'll move to close.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Uh, Cam, do you have anything you want to add?
Only that all of the original conditions of approval remain in effect.
We have no problem with that.
Planning staff recommends approval.
Okay, thank you, Cam.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion at this time to approve case P two-two, day zero five one, as presented to the board here tonight.
Second.
Okay, a motion is made and seconded for approval.
Okay, Council President Waterman.
Aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Aye.
Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
And Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries all in favor. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Counsel.
Let's move on to item seven. B is, uh, case P two-one dash one four-two is a section thirty-one review. Review and discussion of Public Plaza Design for Updates to the Exchange Place Pedestrian Plaza at Hudson Street and Montgomery Street, wrapping north to Christopher Columbus Drive.
Um. I have to accuse myself.
Okay, so, uh, let the record show, Council President Waterman is recusing herself.
So Chairman, if I may, we should get, uh, Mr. Pepe up on the screen.
Sure.
All right, I'm, I'm looking for Pepe. I found him. Promoted Donald Pepe.
Good evening, Chairman Langston.
Good evening, Counsel.
Mister, Mr. Lappi.
Good evening, Mr. Pepe. So Chairman, what we have on this matter, this is a motion for reconsideration by this body. This was a section thirty-one review that was heard at the last meeting of the board. Chairman, Mr. Pepe has filed the motion before the board. I will tell you that, uh, as many of you know, this is a legal request by Mr. Pepe for the board to reconsider the vote that was taken at the last meeting. This is a legal argument, and Mr. Pepe has asked that the board reconsider what was done at the last hearing. Uh, he is not asking to present any additional evidence or testimony, but rather, he is asking that the board to reconsider the manner in which the vote was taken and the basis for the vote. Now, uh, this was a section thirty-one review. And as I had indicated the last time, the section thirty-one review is very limited in scope. This is not a site plan application. This is not a amendment to a redevelopment plan. This is a courtesy review under section thirty-one of the MLUL, the Municipal Land Use Law. That provision of the statute states that, uh, this body has the right to review and recommend projects of this nature in conjunction with the master plan. So the scope of the review is how consistent the plan proposed or the application proposed is with the master plan. And this body can make recommendations if it finds that the application is not consistent with the master plan. So Mr. Pepe filed the motion for reconsideration and says essentially that the board undertook its review. However, the question that was posed by the board and therefore the ultimate decision of the board is contrary to the law. He cites the Ocean County Utility Case and has asked the board to reconsider its position. So the question properly before this body on a section thirty-one review is whether or not the application heard by the board and the testimony presented is or is not consistent with the master plan. And that is what should have been voted on by the board. And Mr. Pepe is saying that the board should reconsider that and determine whether or not what was proposed was or was not consistent with the master plan. Mr. Pepe, is that a fair and accurate description of your motion for reconsideration?
That's correct, Mr. Lappi. I'd like to put a little bit of a finer point on it, though. It's not specific design elements that the board is challenged to look at under a section thirty-one review. It's the overall project. And my point was, I think that a lot of the, the vote that took place at the last hearing was related to design elements, specifically related to the Caton Monument, and didn't really get to the heart of the issue, which was, is the plan consistent with the master plan for Jersey City?
So Chairman, that is the charge to the board. The question that the board has to answer is whether or not the project as proposed, the overall improvement to the plaza, is or is not consistent with our master plan. We had some comments from Mallory on behalf of the planning division, and they went through the master plan, and the question is, does the board find it to be consistent with the master plan? If not, why not?
All right. Thank you, Counsel. Um, do we want to bring up Mallory at this point?
If you would like to hear from Mallory, obviously, she is, she is on the screen and available to, to help the board. I believe that her testimony under oath at the prior hearing was that, uh, as the planner, she was of the position that it was consistent with the master plan, but again, that's, that's for the board to determine. Uh, I, I don't think we want her to necessarily supplement her, her testimony, but I, I believe that that was the testimony provided by, uh, Mallory on the, on the issue.
Okay, I'm comfortable with that. Um.
If you want to get her to confirm that, that would be appropriate. But I think supplementing would be inappropriate because we're in board deliberation at this point.
Okay, yeah, just being that we're in a board deliberation, that it's not really a, a full-blown review here. I, I think we can just take her comment on the last, um, the last hearing of this matter, and we can run with those. So I, I agree with our counsel. I also agree with Mr. Pepe. A, a section thirty-one review, and, and I misspoke when it comes to a section thirty-one review. My comments may be more appropriate for a site plan review rather than a section thirty-one review. I do have, you know, some reservations about some of the design elements, but I do find that, you know, all in all, the, um, the park does, the park does comply with the Jersey City Master Plan, uh, the open space elements, the pedestrian elements. I believe I stated that on the record. I may not have, but, um, like I said, I, I did have specific design element reservations, and, um, I, I'd like those to stand on the record. But being a section thirty-one review, it does comply with the master plan. So maybe I led the board astray with my design element concerns at the last, uh, hearing. And, uh, that's it for me. Anybody else have any comments, questions? Questions for Santo? Questions for me? Anybody? Or Counsel?
No, I'll state my comments during the vote, Chairman.
Okay.
But I appreciate, I appreciate your, your leadership here. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um.
Yeah, I just would like to say, I appreciate the leadership you're taking. Also, I appreciate the clarification on this. But I would like to, any other comments, I would do it on my phone.
Okay, understood. Um, Santo, what's our procedure here on a, um, a reconsideration? Do we just move to? We just move to a?
Yeah, so again, the, it is a motion for reconsideration. The question, the legal question presented to this body is whether or not the wrong standard was applied. The appropriate action to be taken is a motion to approve or a motion that the application as presented is in conformance and consistency with the master plan or is not in conformance and is inconsistent. If it is moved that it's inconsistent, then the recommendations that would need to be made to the applicant and stated for purposes of the record are what's inconsistent and what would be done to attempt to bring it into conformity or into consistency with the master plan. So depending on which way the motion is going to be made, then that would be how it gets framed by the movement of the motion. So if it's a motion to find, or a motion recommending it as consistent, that's the way that would go. If it's a motion finding it to be inconsistent, then there needs to be the stated reasons as to why it's being moved as inconsistent. And what, if anything, could be done to make it consistent, which of course, the applicant could always reject. I think that Mr. Pepe, uh, wants the legal clarification because it's the right thing. It needs to be done the proper way, and that's the purpose of the motion for reconsideration. The ironic part of all of this is it's a courtesy review. So even if it were determined by this body to be inconsistent with the master plan with stated reasons on the record, Mr. Pepe and Mr. Pepe's client are free to reject that and go ahead and build whatever it is that, that they have proposed. So, uh, I don't say that for any reason other than for edification purposes.
Okay, thank you, Counsel. And, um, once again, we are not hearing any new testimony on this action tonight unless the board, anybody from the board, needs new testimony. I think, uh, I'd prefer to let the record speak for itself on the last, um, the last application.
And this is a purely legal argument with the board reconsiderating its prior decision and how it arrived at that decision. So there's no further testimony. The public comment stands. The testimony stands. It's just a reconsideration of the legal standard applied in the matter.
Okay, thank you, Counsel. So, uh, if Mallory has nothing to add, I'll entertain a motion. Or Mr. Pepe.
No, Chairman, thank you. I have nothing further.
Okay, thank you, Counsel.
Okay, Mr. Chair, at this time, I'd like to actually make a motion to approve and accept the section thirty-one review, review and discussion of public plaza and design for updates to the Exchange Place Pedestrian Plaza at Hudson Street and Montgomery Street, wrapping north to Christopher Columbus Drive, and vote on it as a plan that is consistent with the master plan and vote upon it favorably.
So then, Dr. Gonzalez, the motion is to, uh, recommend that the application is consistent with the master plan.
That's correct.
That is the motion.
That is the motion.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Okay, so just for clarity of the record, because there were, um, some commissioners that were not present at the last meeting, and we have a few less than we did on the original vote. So the commissioners that would be voting on this who were present at the last hearing are Dr. Gonzalez, Commissioner Allen, Dr. Desai, Commissioner Torres, and Chairman Langston.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you, Mallory.
Yep. So on a motion to recommend as consistent with the master plan, Dr. Gonzalez?
I will vote aye. Um, I will, I have a few, few comments that I want to just make, and this is for, uh, Mr. Pepe and his client, and for really everyone. I've been on the board for ten years, I believe. Um, so I have, uh, I've been on the board for ten years, I believe. Um, so I have a a very good understanding of, I think, of what's happening uh, in the city. Um, I I will just say that oftentimes when we do section thirty-one reviews, it's very difficult sometimes to decipher between, this is from my personal experience. When we're voting for something, um, if we have an applicant that is showing us an application where we feel there is a design element that maybe not, uh, you know, uh, according to what we like, and it's important for the for us, the board, to realize that that's not what we're voting for. However, um, on this specific case, um, I was more concerned with the fact that the um, the public uh, did not have a lot of interaction from what we were being told with the client. And so um, I think the confusion, I I want to just say that because I don't want Chairman to to take the blame on on the misdirection. I think that that was me as well. Um, and that's where we were were standing, and I hope, Mr. Pepe, you understand that, you know, we take our job very seriously. Um, and um, you know, when we hear things that the um, client did not meet with the public or that the client or the public's concerns were not uh, addressed appropriately, we take that very seriously. And then obviously, you know that we don't really like that much. Um, does this plan fit with the master plan? Yes, the pedestrian, uh, you know, kind of uh, thinking of how we want that plaza to be. Yes, it does. And for that reason, uh, we uh, say that it's consistent with the master plan, and I vote aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Allen?
Aye.
Dr. Desai?
Aye.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes, um, so um, Tony Pepe, um, your presentation the last time, and I uh, just want to make it real clear on that um, with the response, just like the best chair Gonzalez has just Dr. Gonzalez just pointed out. The concern was more for the what the public was asking about, it might be as a public, as a judge, any resident. Over the week, looking at the master plan and the consistency of the plan and what was presented that day, I think I think my vote was um, my comment before my vote at that meeting was I did agree with the plan itself and everything. There was just one part of the plan that I didn't uh, agree to. Um, and as a result of noticing now, I guess, I mean, I guess, I'm not sure that we are with the master plan, consistency of the master plan. And with that, there is nothing I could see in this project that is not consistent. With that, I'm going to vote an aye vote. Um, I hope that your clients will look at the comments that were made by the public and adjust them, but my vote is aye for this project.
Thank you. And Chairman Langston?
So, as I said before, I I stand behind the comments I made on record as far as the design elements go. Um, as we know, a section thirty-one review is consistency with the master plan. Um, I do believe the space is consistent with the master plan, um, as far as, you know, pedestrian connectivity, uh, open space and the such. Um, but again, I I'd like, you know, the applicant to be aware of the comments we made on record. Um, I do want to apologize to the board if, you know, I led us in a different direction. Um, and I that responsibility falls squarely on me, and um, I take full responsibility for that. But the uh, like I said, the section thirty-one has very clear goals and um, I think we treated it more like a site plan, and I'd like to correct that record tonight. So I'm going to vote aye.
Okay, motion carries on, favor for recommendation.
Okay, thank you, Mallory.
Thank you, Chairman. Commissioners, for for the record, I have a profound amount of respect for this board and the work that they do. We did hear the comments. We always have listened to the public. We will continue to do so. We will take them into consideration. And thank you for you.
All right, thank you, counsel. All right, let's move on to new business, everybody. Um, I believe we do have Commissioner Lipsky with us now. We repair.
I'm in a stationary, permanent location.
Thank you, Commissioner. Safe, that's what matters.
That's it. Um, and if we could, uh, let's bring Commissioner Waterman back. Uh, I'll shoot her a text real quick to see if uh, she is with us and available.
So I don't need the attorney for one ninety Newark Ave in the attendees.
Ooh.
Alexandra Erko.
Chairman, I believe that counsel also did not appear at the last hearing. We called the case.
We did.
Is the applicant, the applicant, I believe, has his hand up.
Yeah, that's the applicant again. Can we uh?
Let's bring him up.
Promoted Brian Markey.
Oh, Cam, I see that.
Good evening, Mr. Markey. Can you just, oh, there she is. Here we go.
How you doing?
Good. How are you, sir?
Good.
All right. We found counsel.
There we go.
All right, and also let's let the record show that Council President Waterman is back online with us.
Good evening, counsel. Can you just confirm that the vehicle is in park and you are?
It's in park. It's in park. Uh, I'm parked, and uh, I'm sorry, I was leaving the office. Uh, I'm in park and I'm ready to proceed.
Thank you, counsel.
All right, thank you, counsel. Let's put your appearance on record, please.
Alexandra Erko uh, here for the class five variants to um, proceed for a commercial use of the sale of the cannabis on behalf of my client, um, Brian Market, who is uh, present on Zoom as well.
Chairman, this is a notice case. I am in receipt of the affidavit of publication proof mailing with respect to the application at one ninety Newark Avenue on behalf of Guarding Greens LLC. Mr. Markey is the managing member, as I understand it. The affidavit of publication proof of service does appear to be in order. We can mark it as a one for the records.
Thank you, counsel.
Now, Chairman, I have to tell you that uh, I have had conversations with the Planning Division as well as counsel for the Cannabis Board. We've had a couple of conversations now, and there was some question about procedure and how all of this is going to play out. I know many of the board members had asked these questions. And I just want to state for the record and everybody in public that uh, the board's jurisdiction is limited to the zoning, whether or not it conditionally uh, or meets the conditions set forth in the ordinance, as we've heard from the various applicants. Uh, the applicants will have to appear before the Cannabis Commission, at which time the applications will be vetted for all of the requirements, specifically the community impact. Uh, that is their charge and their focus. They will go through that meticulously and then be making a report and recommendations to the mayor and council regarding licensing of the establishment. So our purview is limited in scope to the zoning considerations and whether or not the site is within the parameters of the conditions.
All right, thank you, counsel. All right, Ms. Erko, uh, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Uh, the business currently that is operating, uh, that my client is recommending to be transferred into switched, uh, this, we are not changing anything. What we're basically proposing is for Mr. Market to be able to obtain a zoning permission of the class five, uh, commercial, uh, recreational zone to sell cannabis. We will still have to uh, apply to the state of New Jersey for licensing. Uh, my client, I believe, did submit an application uh, to the state of New Jersey. He is a microbusiness, which is a minority uh, business that is zoned correctly. We're not asking the planning board, um, for any variances in reference to the appearance or the reconstruction or construction of the um, building, uh, building, uh, the building is as is, I believe qualifies uh, for the zoning that is right now commercially zoned in the uh, uh, Jersey City Historic District. All we're asking the the uh, board to do is just to classify it as a class five um, commercial for commercial recreational use cannabis sales. Um, that's all we're asking to do. I believe we submitted drawings of what the signage on the uh, business would is going to look like. Um, it is properly zoned, I believe, for class five cannabis uh, business recreational use. Um, we are not going to be changing anything inside. Um, it is in a perfect location. It's similar to um, something that would be used for medicinal uh, cannabis use by people. Um, Gem uh, loan company has been in this particular location, I believe, for over uh, forty years, longer than that, maybe sixty years. Um, it's been in uh, downtown Jersey City area, same location for since nineteen sixties. Um, uh, Mr. Mark is well-known in the community. Um, he's well-respected. He actually had a course. He went to a community college graduate, of course, uh, had to properly sell uh, cannabis. Uh, he obtained the certificate. I would think we provided it to the planner as well, Mr. Espinoza. And uh, we're ready to proceed. Um, we don't have any witnesses in reference to uh, any expert witnesses such as architects and engineering, uh, because I don't believe we're going to be changing anything in reference to the storefront or inside of the store. Um, the only thing, like I said, we've been, uh, we need is the uh, permission uh, from the board to be able to sell it recreationally and obviously obtaining a license from the state of New Jersey once that occurs uh, in order to proceed with the sale.
Okay, thank you, counsel. Um. Francisco, are you uh, on with us here?
Yes.
Okay, uh, just a couple of questions for you. Um, Santo laid out, you know, what this board's role is when it comes to these applications. Uh, I agree, the Cannabis Control Board, um, I I read some of the testimony from their previous meeting, and and they're on top of things. I'm proud of those guys. Um. But when it comes to the zoning, um, and the design, does design still fall under us?
Design does, however, because it's in the NC, there's not really much you can do for signage.
Uh, it's not the signage I'm concerned about. It's more, um, you know, the inside space, the security aspect of it. Um.
I do that the, so the only plan that we saw that allowed for um, interior things were, was the Newark Downtown Redevelopment Plan. Um, the NC didn't really have anything regarding um, uh, like any security uh, fences behind the the windows or anything like that. We couldn't really.
As as far as where product is stored, um, ventilation, the such like that. So you know, I know that's part of the ordinance that no odor should be allowed to get out.
Yeah.
I'm not really seeing that. Uh, is that something this board should require, or is that is that going to fall under the Cannabis Control Board?
I think that also would fall on the Cannabis Control Board as well. Since they would be looking at, um, for example, consumption lounge, they'll be looking at um, HVAC information, um, odor mitigation, and also security plans.
Okay, and we're
We're focusing more on the land use aspect.
Okay, so the actual inside design of the space is going to fall more more under the Cannabis Control Board?
Yes.
Okay, I wish I had a few hours of my life back then. It seems like I've spent a lot of time focusing on those things. Okay.
Growing pains, Chairman.
All right, what's that, counsel? I I didn't hear you.
Growing pains.
Yeah, yeah, we're getting there. We'll figure it out one of these days. Um. Okay, so with that, um, that's counsel's presentation. There's no expert witnesses to call. Um, does anybody from the board have any questions?
So Chairman Langston, uh, what we're stating now is basically, this is Commissioner Torres, we're stating now is uh, the layout inside the store, the way they have multiple businesses going on, that has nothing to do with what's being presented to me today. I am only on the land use only, unless we'll be going to a uh, different part for review on that. That's what we're saying.
Yeah, what we're looking at is whether or not the site is permitted at its proposed location, whether or not it meets the ordinance, whether or not, uh, for example, it's a hundred feet from a school that's on the map, and it doesn't meet it, this board doesn't have jurisdiction, they got to go to the zoning board and try to secure approval from the zoning board. The other items that you're discussing, that's going to be part of the jurisdiction of the commission, the Cannabis Commission, and they're going to go through all of that uh, in in detail and make a recommendation regarding licensing to the mayor and council before uh, the applicant's going to be able to to secure the license from the from the city and obviously the state.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks, Eddie. Um, Francisco, I'm looking at your staff report. And on page two, there's three different sections where you say applicant to provide testimony. Once again, this is on your staff report to the board.
Yes, the staff report was written, I believe. One second.
Uh, it's dated three twenty-five.
Yes, and then these changes came about, I believe, a few weeks ago.
Okay.
Once the commission was created and then they reviewed.
Okay, just, you know, I'm trying to dot our keys and cross our i's here, so.
Chairman, if there is testimony that this body wants to hear regarding those items, this body can hear that testimony. But know that a lot of it is going to have to be dealt with at the commission. So the the real question is, how much does this body want to go into items that are really under the purview of the commission and will be addressed by the commission? If you want to, feel free to do it.
That's correct.
Okay, no, it's um.
Counsel, one question to that, though, is if we delve into the waters of this application, does any of the testimony then lighten the load for the Cannabis Commission? Do they have to do another review?
So the the answer is they're going to have to present that testimony again to the commission, and the commission is going to and has a lot broader power. So there's no question, there is some overlap. But the commission is going to get into all sorts of things that this body's not going to get into. For instance, the commission's going to get into the financing of the venture. That's something that the commission has the authority to do. This body has no authority to do that. So uh, again, this is new to everybody in the field. Uh, it's just become legalized. So we're all learning on the curve, as they say. So our charge really is, does the location comport with the ordinance? Is it permitted where it is? And then it moves on in the process to the commission to get into who are the people involved? Do they have the wherewithal? What's the community benefit? What's the community impact? How are they going to handle? That's really all at the commission level.
Okay, so, you know, we have Francisco's report. I think they're covering all the zoning aspects of it. And like I said before, that cannabis control board is they're digging deep. You know, obviously cannabis locations aren't the only thing we do here, so I'm glad they're on top of things. I have no other questions for the applicant. Does anybody else before we open it up for public? Okay, thank you, everybody. Counsel, that was your presentation, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, at this time, let's open it up for public comment. If anybody wants to comment on this application for one ninety Newark Ave, please raise your hand. If you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hand. I do see, I saw one hand raised.
Said meeting scheduler.
Once again, if you're here to comment on this application, please raise your hand. And if you are calling in to comment on this application for one ninety Newark Avenue, you can press star nine to raise your hand.
Mr. Chair, I see no public. I'd like to make a motion to close the public.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and second and public is closed. Francisco, we've read your reports. Do you have anything else you want to add?
No, I have nothing else to add.
Okay.
Ren's approval with conditions.
All right.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P two-two dash zero three seven, as presented to the board tonight.
Just before we get a second on that motion, counsel, are you familiar with the conditions that Francisco is asking for?
Yes, I am.
Okay, and you you can comply with those conditions?
Yes, exactly.
Okay, thank you. So we have the motion. Do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval.
Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Just so clear one thing up. My first shoebox cassette recorder was and they were across the street. It was like maybe forty or fifty years ago. And they were located council across the street. That's where they were at the time, before they moved to that corner. Just to let the people know, we are residents in our neighborhood. And with that, I do vote aye for this project.
Thank you.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Yeah, for all the reasons stated and the conditions being met, and then also reading Rachel Sieg's letter from the historic she gives a glowing recommendation, Mr. Mark, you know, his efforts in the community, so I enthusiastically vote aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desiree.
Aye.
Counsel President Waterman.
Aye.
And Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Motion carries all in favor.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Good luck, guys.
Thank you, board.
Thank you. All right, let's move on to item ten on the agenda. Is case P two-two dash zero seven-three is a conditional use for one fifty Bay Street? Promoting Justin. There we go.
Good evening, everybody. I made it on. It's a pleasure to be here and I appreciate everyone's time. It's nice to see you all again. My name is Justin Corbalis. I am an attorney with Lowenstein Sandler LLP. And today I'm here to proudly represent my client and the applicant WR Wellness LLC. I understand based on the discussions that just happened with the board that there may be some aspects of this application that I was preparing to testify on that you may not care about. If I happen to venture off into that territory, please feel free to check me. The application before the board today is for a minor site redevelopment plan for a class five cannabis retail business. It will be located at one fifty Bay Street. This is in the powerhouse arts district and notice has been given and I confirmed from, to carry from the last meeting.
Thank you, counsel. Chairman, I ever see the affidavit of publication proof of mailing. This was originally scheduled for the April twenty-six meeting of this body. At that time, we preserved the notice and carried it to this evening's meeting. All does appear to be in order. We can mark it as A-one for the record.
All right, thank you, counsel.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, everyone. I've note before getting into a little high level overview of what the WR Wellness is bringing. We have received favorable letters of appropriateness from the zoning board and the historic preservation committee for the work and location. And notably, this application does not include a request for a consumption lens. This is a straightforward class five cannabis retail operation only. Before getting into expert testimony from our architects, I'd like to bring up some images of the building just so the board and the community can familiarize themselves with the property. If it's right with you, I'd like to start sharing my screen.
Sure, go ahead, counsel.
It says, screen sharing is disabled for me.
I'll fix that. Sorry about that.
No worries. I appreciate the help.
You're good now.
Okay, great. So this is the exterior of one fifty Bay Street. As, at the risk of stating the obvious, this is a beautiful site. It was designated as a historic building by the city and out of deference to that historic nature, our proposed redevelopment is genuinely minimal. We are looking to provide a state of the art facelift to the interior that, in my opinion, would put an Apple Store to shame and greatly improve the aesthetic of the neighborhood. We're not proposing any facade modifications or no work that would impact any load bearing walls or the historic integrity of the building. But before getting into further substantive testimony, I want to talk about WR Wellness's vision. It goes far beyond bringing a beautiful retail store to the community. Collectively, the WR Wellness team is bringing expertise specific to the cannabis industry and successful operations in other states and a forward thinking business, a demonstrated record of philanthropic efforts in both New Jersey and at the national level. And a lifelong New Jersey resident as part of the team is committed to public service and community engagement. What's more, this vision will not only bring an aesthetic beauty to the neighborhood, increase local jobs, give the city tax revenue, and the community benefits detailed in our plans. But perhaps most importantly, it will serve to replace what was formerly a crime ridden nightclub that has plagued the surrounding neighborhood, thereby greatly improving the safety, integrity of the community, its families, and their children. I do have my clients here today, if the board has any questions for them, but based on the understanding that you'd like to just focus on the zoning and land use matters, I would like to take this over and introduce our architects, John Bradshaw and Peter Theodore. John and Peter, if you wouldn't mind clicking the raise your hand button, so you can be admitted, that would be much appreciated.
Promoted Peter. Promoted John.
Thank you.
And who are you going to have testify first?
Mr. Theodore.
Thanks.
They actually work together, so it'll be in concert.
Okay, so we could, let's swear both of them in and qualify both.
If you gentlemen want to turn on your videos and unmute.
Okay, I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth is nothing but truth.
All right, just hang on a moment. Whenever John and you can turn your videos on and unmute, then we can, I'll swear you guys in and then you could take it away.
Okay. Okay.
All right, you're not driving, are you?
Nope.
All right, and is John there or is he, are you going to handle this one?
John's, John is remote, but I'll induce myself right now. My name is Peter Theodore. Okay.
Let me just swear you in, all right, if you can raise your right hand.
Sure.
You swear any testimony you give tonight is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And you've already said Peter Theodore. Can you just spell that for me, please?
Peter, P E T E R, Theodore, T H E O D O R E.
Thank you.
All right, good evening, Theodore. Are you a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey?
I am.
Okay, have you presented to a planning board in the past or our planning board?
Members from my office have, and we represent national clients such as TJ Maxx and other people, so we've done a lot of work in your community.
Okay, and are you familiar with the plan being presented tonight?
I am. All the drawings were prepared by myself in my office and I've overseen them to ensure that they comply with the city requirements.
Okay, thank you, sir. You are qualified.
Thank you.
John, are you able to chime in yet?
Yeah, can you hear me okay?
We can hear you. Are you able to turn your video on?
I do not have video, unfortunately.
Okay, Mr. Theodore, given, I don't know if you heard our last application, our scope is very limited as far as cannabis retail uses. We're just concerned with the zoning. Do you think you could handle the testimony without Mr. Bradshaw?
Absolutely, and I have Justin as well. And I heard some of the commentary before, so I'm comfortable addressing those concerns.
Okay, so if you're comfortable, let's move forward. If you feel that you need help at any moment, let's, we'll address that when it comes.
Okay. So Justin, do you think I should be sworn in as well with my testimony? This is John.
It appears that the board wants a video appearance for you to be sworn in.
Yeah, we do.
Counsel, we don't take expert testimony from witnesses that are unable to present via video, so I think that Peter will be able to provide the necessary testimony in light of this board's jurisdiction on the matter.
Okay, that's fine.
Mr. Bradshaw, feel free to stay on and listen in, but let's see how, how Peter does.
Okay.
So Mr. Theodore, if you could just walk us through the land use aspect of your plan.
Okay, I'm going to try to do this off my phone right now. Can I do it in broad based terms as far as describing how the facility functions and the mechanisms we'll have in place for security, storage, points of sale, as well as HVAC. So I'm going to kind of go through those points. And will that work for you that way?
It would, but if we could be brief on those, we're really just concerned with the land use element.
Okay, Justin, do you want to take that part of it?
If the board would permit me to testify on that, I, I do think an architect would be required to give this sort of testimony.
Okay, all right.
You're just going to have to testify, walk us through the plan. We can see obviously the vault, the retail area, vestibule. You could walk us through that and really the zoning portions that we are concerned with is distance separation from the school, obviously, and distance in that regard. Main entry can't be within six hundred feet of any other cannabis retail establishment. There are none at this point, so that condition is satisfied. We're not within two hundred feet of the school, the main entrance is, is that fair and accurate? Can you, can you talk about that? And if you could give us the interior layout, general square footage, as well as the general provisions. Any noise and odor would be appreciated.
Okay, hey, John, I'm a little bit disadvantaged because I'm trying to do this off of my phone and my laptop. And I kind of need your, I need your help with this. And now, is there any way you could at least join us via your phone? I did this off my phone, so I'm zooming, zooming in and out of my phone. Yeah, I'm working on it right now. Okay.
For the sake of the board's time, would it be helpful to address the findings of the planning board staff on some of these items? Or would you prefer that our architects walk through them?
Well, I think John and I, John and I can do it, Justin. I just want to make sure that we're succinct with all our comments and that we're on the same pages.
Counsel, quite frankly, we have the sketch up on the screen. We can see, if you could tell us the total area for the proposed retail is represented on the screen as four thousand nine hundred and seventeen square feet.
Yes, that is correct, sir.
Okay.
Correct.
Can you tell us the mitigation of odor? What's being done to mitigate odor?
Absolutely. Yes, I can address that. We will have carbon. Oh, go ahead. We will have, yeah, we will have carbon filters in place, Hapo required, that will not discharge odors into the atmosphere which are consistent with how we do other cannabis facilities. We'll also mitigate noise. We'll have plans in place so that there's no obnoxious noises being emanated from the structure as well. We can address parking. There's no private parking, so there's really no issue there. When it comes down to waste disposal, we'll use standard municipal waste. Anything that's cannabis related will comply with all regulations and dispose of that in accordance with all laws. And as Justin alluded to, we believe that this is a benefit to the community in many different ways, medicinal ways, people that suffer from multiple illnesses such as cancer and other uses such as glaucoma. So there's, there's a lot of benefits to cannabis outside merely the recreational use that people may or may not be aware of that work in conjunction with medicine today that is very helpful in a lot of different ways. So I think I've addressed the mechanical aspect of it.
And the, the signage will comport with the zoning ordinance and redevelopment plan?
It will, and essentially all we're going to be doing, and you correct me if I'm wrong, Justin, is we're going to be replacing the blade sign that is currently in existence with a similar sign in size and shape. So we're not asking for any variances or any increases in signage as they currently exist today.
That is a correct, Peter. We appeared before the historic preservation committee on this specific issue and they've confirmed and submitted a letter of appropriateness that our signs conform the powerhouse arts redevelopment plan.
For the record, the main entrance is on Bay Street. You enter into the vestibule. That's pretty much halfway or in the middle of the retail space, is that?
That is correct, correct.
Mr. Lampy, you referenced odor mitigation. Would you like further details from me?
Sure.
So WR's approach to odor mitigation is really involving three concepts. The first, as Mr. Theodore mentioned, is the city required carbon filters and all HVAC and vents. The second function of odor mitigation really comes from this vestibule, which functions as a closed loop of sorts, meaning that cannabis product stored way back here in the vault that will never be seen or touched by the public. Any odors, if they exist, which they do not, and I'll explain that later, they would not directly emanate into the street. And the third aspect of odor mitigation really involves training staff adequately. But I think it's really important to emphasize that in the context of a class five retailer establishment, the, the specter of cannabis odor is decidedly less than other sorts of cannabis licenses like manufacturing or cannabis cultivation. The protections we have in place are genuinely redundant against a non-issue because cannabis reach, class five retailers really don't cause odor. But to understand this, you need a bit of context on the relationship between New Jersey law, CRC regulations, and the different license types. Class five retailers operate at the tail end of a highly regulated seed to sale chain. In the beginning, manufacturers and growers, they're the ones in charge of handling physical cannabis items, whether it's flour or edible product, and those operations indeed do emit a lot of cannabis odors and require strict controls. But before cannabis product ever leaves those buildings and getting ships to my client, for example, New Jersey law further requires that all of those items are already securely and safely packaged in child resistant, durable and airtight packaging. This entire process, moreover, is overseen by the state through a track and trace system. So by the time any cannabis product arrives to my client's facility, it will be lab tested and safely secured in a way that undercuts the possibility of odor emission through airtight packaging. None of our, none of WR's employees will be handling live or open cannabis items on site or near the premises that could emit odors. In fact, they are legally prohibited from doing. on-site or near the premises that could emit odors. In fact, they are legally prohibited from doing so. They will, of course, inspect packages to ensure container integrity, thereby ensuring that no odor-emitting packages enter the site. But if we're being judicious and practical about the possibility of odor admission, really, I respectfully submit that this is a non-issue. Hypothetically, an incident could happen where a customer drops a jar of, let's say, 3.5 grams of cannabis flower. Immediately, that would be cleaned up by our train staff, safely secured and segregated in our vault and stored in a sealed container. So that very rare instance of odor emission, if you can even call it that, would be handled immediately and certainly not be the kind of odor that would emanate in a way to be a nuisance to the neighbors on top of the carbon filters that we have.
Okay. I think we've covered the land use element. Council, do you agree?
Which council? I'm sorry. I understand the board's time tonight, and I deeply appreciate that the workload has been lessened substantially for you. I do have with us today our security expert, and while I will not ask you to go into, hear the great details of his plan, we are here before the community. Community engagement is important to us. So I would appreciate perhaps two to five minutes of time, so our security expert could show the community that we're not just bringing a security guard, we're bringing a security regime. Would the board entertain that?
I would entertain two minutes.
All right, Mr. Gagnon, if you wouldn't mind pressing the raise your hand button so you can be admitted, and thank you very much for indulging this request.
Loading Michael Gagnon. Michael seems to be declining the promotion, so I don't know if he's misinformed.
Okay.
Now he's rejoining.
Okay, great. I could text him.
He's, he's up there.
Okay. Michael, you'll have to unmute yourself and turn on your video.
Hi, Michael. Let me just swear in, okay? If you could raise your right hand.
Very good.
Do you swear any testimony you give tonight is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
For the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
My name is Michael Gagnon, G-A-G-N-O-N.
Thank you.
Mr. Gagnon, good evening. If you could, just give us a background real quick on your professional experience, and your attorney has agreed to hold you to two minutes as far as your testimony. So let's start that background, and then I'll start you two minutes.
Yes, good evening. So my background is 30 years of experience in security and safety. Working across, that includes working across cannabis businesses, including cultivation, dispensaries, retail, and delivery. We focus, and my focus is based on the certifications I have in physical security system assessments, design, engineering, and implementation.
Okay, thank you, sir. I believe that would qualify you as an expert in your field, so I'm going to qualify you and start your timer.
Thank you. Quickly, the, the plan that we put together for the space, as you look at it, will be state-of-the-art technologies deployed to include video surveillance, a dedicated intrusion alarm system, a card access system, a duress system for emergency notification. And the systems will be designed in such a way that they'll be fully redundant and have failover capabilities as well as backups for power loss in the event that should happen. Some of the physical security measures that we put in place here include installing a class-two UL-rated class-two modular vault and door. We will have vault and storage within that secures the cannabis and will accommodate the storage of all inventory, products awaiting sale, products stored as waste, and any product waiting to be destroyed. A security mesh will be embedded under the drywall that joins the space to prevent any entry into the space. And to mitigate the effects of window smashing, a clear-view security window film will deploy on the inside of the glass, which is designed to hold the glass in place in the event it is smashed or shot at. From an operational standpoint, a space will, as you've heard, resemble an Apple Store environment. There'll be no actual product that'll be displayed and just empty packaging. Once purchased, the products will be provided to the client in generic round paper bags. Processing areas, vaults, workrooms will remain secured at all times. There'll be no smoking or consuming in, on, or around the premises, and it will be strictly enforced. You see the front of the building as a vestibular area. They'll be completely secured and used for checking in and checking identification. And the delivery of the products will be done to the side of the building in Provo Street, fully secured with card access, video, and alarms as required, and supervised by security personnel at both the vestibule and at the delivery point. Once the business is fully approved, full security assessment will be done and performed in collaboration with state and local law enforcement authorities to provide the best plan that meets the security needs for the business and the area. So in conclusion, in an effort to mitigate security incidents in the future, WR Wellness will continue to assess their security needs on a regular basis and include its policies and procedures and adjust them accordingly to the business needs as they go forward.
All right, thank you, sir. Just a quick question. So customers enter that vestibule, those outside doors are operable from the outside, right? You don't have to get buzzed in to get in those, that first set of doors?
Chairman, as the design is today, that first set of doors will be controlled and secured with a video intercom, and you will need to get buzzed into the vestibular area once that person has been checked and ID'd.
Okay, and then there is a second card access, I guess, at, to get into the space from the vestibule, correct?
That is correct, Chairman, on each of those doors. Yes, sir.
Okay, understood. Thank you, sir. I appreciate the testimony. Anybody, any questions? Okay, thank you. Counsel, anything else?
No, sir.
All right, thank you. If you could just stop that screen sharing.
Happily.
Okay, this time, let's open it up for public comment. If anybody's here from the public that wants to comment, please raise your hand. I see one up already. And if you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hand.
Loading Julia Duffy.
I'm Mr. Duffy. I just want to swear in.
I'm actually an attorney here representing a client. Do you still need me to be sworn in?
Not at all, thanks.
Thanks. Good evening, and thank you to the planning board for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Julia Duffy. I am an attorney with the law firm of O'Toole-Scribo. I represent the Waldo School, which operates a private school at two locations at 110 First Street and 125 First Street. Though the school's 125 First Street location has frontage on First Street, it is one of many tenants in the building known as 140 Bay Street, which is located just across Provo Street from WR Wellness LLC's proposed location. Pursuant to ordinance number 21-053, which amended Chapter 345 of the City Code, no cannabis establishment may be located within 200 feet of a school. The distance is to be measured from the parcel boundary on which the school is located. Pursuant to Section 345-6 of City Code, a parcel is defined as a lot or contiguous group of lots in a single ownership or under single control. I respectfully direct the members of the planning board to the seventh page of the applicant's notice packet, which contains a map of the properties located within a 200-foot radius of the property at 150 Bay Street. The parcel within which the Waldo School is located is clearly within the 200-foot radius as submitted by the applicant. Indeed, properties located at both 130 and 140 Bay Street are included in the city assessor's listing of properties within a 200-foot radius of the property. This list is also included in the applicant's notice packet, beginning at page eight. The Waldo School is fully licensed and has been operating in this location since October 2020, over a year and a half ago. On December 1st, 2021, the Waldo School informed parents that its fifth through eighth grades will be moving into the 125 First Street location, beginning with the 2022 to 2023 school year. The applicant's proposed location violates the city zoning code as its main entryway is within 200 feet of the parcel on which the Waldo School is located. This location is clearly not suitable for cannabis retail operations, and the Waldo School urges the planning board to deny the application. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Duffy. Just a couple of quick questions. The the location at 125, that's currently operational? You said that there were students moving into that space?
It's currently being operated as a preschool. Like I said, the school, excuse me, notified its parents that the middle school would be moving into that building from the other location, beginning in September of this year.
Okay, is, is there a drug-free school zone in the area for that?
I believe this falls within the drug-free school area from the 110 First Street location as well.
Chairman, if I may speak?
Sure, go ahead, counsel.
Before you speak, Chairman, perhaps we should hear from planning?
Yeah, that would be appropriate. I was just going through the staff report again.
Chairman and counsel, I wasn't sworn in at the beginning, but I'm just gonna interject because Francisco, although he is a fantastic planner, he does not have a license, and I just wouldn't want to be in any kind of situation where that would become a problem.
Sure. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Why don't we, well, for purposes of the record, Ms. Marion is the director of planning, but Ms. Marion, if we could just happy to take your testimony.
Do you swear any testimony you give tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, go ahead, Tanya.
Um, so I didn't review, I'm just gonna be honest, I didn't review the 200-foot list. But I can at least confirm that we don't differentiate between private and public. I believe the Waldo is probably a private school. The only thing that we do with daycares, we really try to keep it very, very close to the definitions within the drug-free school zone, which is 1,000 feet, and that definition. And I'm just gonna ask Francisco to chime in just because he knows better. It's X amount of students in kindergarten that qualify it to be within that 1,000-foot zone. So I don't know if it matters whether or not then the kindergartners are in that building or not. But if the school itself does serve that population and is within the 200 foot, then it would be a problem.
May I interject?
Yeah.
Let's, let's get Francisco's testimony first. The question was posed to Francisco.
Of course, sir. My apologies.
No worries.
So what was the question? One more time?
Francisco, what was, how many students did you have to have in a kindergarten before you were recognized within the drug-free school zone? Do you remember?
I don't remember the exact number. Let me.
I can, I can take a quick look. But that is, that is what made the difference between daycare and schools within the drug-free school zone.
Chairman, if I may?
Sure.
Please, counsel.
So I understand the concern, but I think this can be dealt with a straightforward application of the law to the facts. The planning board staff has confirmed that the location of this purported school is not listed on the city's drug-free official school zone map, and the ordinance specifically requires that the distance measurement be between the main entry of a cannabis establishment and the school listed on the drug-free school zone map. That is not yet the case, and I feel that my client would be severely prejudiced by having their application denied for a hypothetical when we have followed every process, we have checked every box, and the planning board has confirmed that we have met this 200-foot distance requirement. And in any event, the main entrance of our cannabis establishment is in the middle of Bay Street, and there has been no record evidence provided that this would be within a 200-foot radius of that.
So Chairman, here's another term that the board has heard me say before. Judicial notice. This body has already determined, when interpreting the ordinance, that one, the measurement is from the front door, 200 feet to the location. This body has also found and determined that the drug-free school zone map is what's controlling as it pertains to the ordinance. So that has been the determination of this body, and this body is going to continue or should continue interpreting the ordinance consistent with its prior rulings on those two points.
Okay, and that 125 address does as Ms. Duffy stated, doesn't carry its own drug-free school zone, and that doesn't overlap into the 200 foot? I guess that would be for Francisco.
That's correct. The, the school zone wasn't overlapped with this property in this application.
Okay. So I don't know, Santa, let me know if this is off-base. My question would be, and I'm sure this isn't covered in the ordinance. What if a school does open up during the permitting process, during the licensing process?
So Chairman, I would say two things. One, this is where we get into the conversation of interpretation of the zoning ordinance and the jurisdiction of this body to determine the zoning issue. So the question is whether or not the location comports with the conditional use criteria under the zoning ordinance. As it stands, when the application is heard by the body, the answer is either yes or no. If this body finds that a school is not a school, if this body finds that it's not on the drug-free list when the application is filed, that controls this body. For everybody's, you know, sense of, of ease, I will tell you, the Cannabis Commission is going to get into that and the community impact. So just because a site fits within the zoning ordinance, I believe that the Cannabis Commission is going to talk about the community impact, and if a retailer is in proximity to businesses that the Cannabis Commission thinks is detrimental to the community, they're going to take that into consideration. That's not for this body. This body has to determine whether or not the applicant meets the zoning criteria. This body has already decided that 200 feet is measured from the front door under the ordinance. This body has already determined that the ordinance requires the applicant to comport with the drug-free school zone list. If it's a school identified on the list, then it's identified on the list, and jurisdiction would not be before this board. So that's the charge of this board. Do I think that it will be problematic if they're trying to open a cannabis retailer at or near a nursery school? I'll leave that to the Cannabis Commission and the people that want to be heard at that body on that issue.
Okay, so it's your interpretation that this meets the zoning in the ordinance currently?
Chairman, it's not my interpretation. This board has already made that interpretation and has already made that decision. The board acts. I merely advise, Chairman.
Okay, thank you, counsel. Ms. Duffy, do you have anything else you want to add? I want to make sure you have your, your time.
I, thank you for the opportunity. I would just note that it's not a hypothetical. The school will be opening to middle school students in September. I can provide the board with that letter or the email that was sent out to all parents, and I would note, I do cannabis work as well. The middle school will open well before this retail dispensary is operational. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, counsel. So at this time, if there's nothing else from counsel, let's open it up. let's open it up for public comment. Is there anybody here from the public that wants to comment on this application for one-fifty Bay Street? Anybody from public?
Mr. Chair, I see no public. I move to close the public.
We do. We do. We do have a couple of hands raised.
Oh, okay.
Voting Catherine.
And once again, if you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise that hand.
How you doing? I'll swear in.
Catherine Moore.
Yep, uh, let me just swear in. Can you hear me or no?
Yeah.
Oh, great. If you can raise your right hand. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight is gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And now for the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Catherine Moore, K A T H R Y N M O O R E.
And would you be able to give us your address too as well?
Uh, one-forty Bay Street.
Thank you.
Ms. Moore, good evening. Um, we usually do five minutes. Can we get you done in three minutes?
Sure.
I appreciate.
I think I have too much to say. I just want to say that just proving to the lawyer's knowledge, he did speak to a a few of us in the neighborhood when we first heard about it, right before they were to present two weeks ago, and we felt that things were in in line and in order and a much better choice than the nightclub that was there, that was open to all hour to night, and this would just be a retail location. We understand that it is a legal retail business, and we feel like they've checked all the boxes. I find that you probably should be a little bit more clear about what is a school and what isn't a school. And maybe in the future, after after all of this is said and done, be a little bit more particular about the storefront retail schools that seem to pop up in weird little places. Because we live in this building, and we did not know that, you know, they were having plans to to open a school in our neighborhood and in our building. And I feel like the retail spaces on First Street shouldn't have anything to do with the residential portion of the building. So that in turn should also be something that is considered. One-ten First Street is only in a portion of one-ten First Street. That location is also just a retail space. It is not a bona fide, I don't want to say a bona fide school, but it's not a traditional school that encompasses an entire building. It only has one main entrance, and that one main entrance is two-hundred feet away. So when looking at this in in further, because this could come up, because there are all these storefront schools that are popping up and sort of evolving into these schools, this issue, I think, is going to be pertinent to the city in general when you want to consider what is two-hundred feet. Is it by the crow flies? Or is it by, you know, walking distance from the main entrance to the main entrance of a retail space that is being used as a school? So that's, you know, just the detail that I think that needs to be addressed in the future. But like you said, you know, this is not on a list that is currently available. And it was not made known, at least to me, someone who was a condo owner in the building, that one-forty Bay, that there was a school that was in our school other than a preschool that deals with small children for a whole lot of money. So that's pretty much it.
All right, thank you. We appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So chairman, I I would add this to the conversation for for the members of the public that are here, that maybe weren't here at prior meetings. The LDO does define school. This body is very clear as to what the definition of a school is. And it's it's not something that escapes us, chairman, so I just want to make that clear.
Yeah, we've we've learned way too much about that at this point. Okay, so let's move on with public comment. I see one more hand raised. If anybody from the public wants to comment on one-fifty Bay Street, please raise your hand. If you can press star nine.
Susan declined to be promoted, so that may have been a mistake on her behalf.
Okay, so let's call it one more time. If anybody from the public is here and wants to comment on the application for one-fifty Bay Street, you could raise your hand. And we will promote you if you are calling in and you'd like to comment on one-fifty Bay Street, please press star nine to raise your hand.
Mr. Chair, I see no one else on raising their hand, so I move to close the public.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded. Public is closed. All right, Francisco, Francisco, do you have anything else you want to add?
Our staff have has no other comments other than staff recommends approval with conditions aligned in the staff report.
Okay, thank you, sir. And vice chair Gonzalez, you are going to abstain on this vote, correct?
And it's correct, chairman.
Okay, so I would need someone else to make a motion.
Go ahead, Eddie.
Go ahead. Make a motion.
To.
For.
I would like to make a motion for case P two-two dash zero seven-three, as it was presented here for tonight.
And
with the good meeting of the conditions, my step.
And Commissioner, the motion is for approval or denial?
For approval.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion for approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, thank you. We have a motion and a second for approval. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Torres? Commissioner Allen?
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky? You're on mute.
Commissioner Lipsky, you're on mute.
On mute.
Better?
Yeah.
Gotcha.
So given staff recommendation and the letter from Nick Taylor from zoning approving conditional use, I vote aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai?
I would aye.
Counsel President Waterman?
Aye.
And Chairman Lincoln?
Aye.
Motion carries all in favor.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Um, am I okay to move on with one more?
Yeah, I see. It's just a subdivision.
Okay. Never say that. All right, let's call item eleven on the agenda. It's case P two-one dash one-five-eight. It's a minor subdivision with C variance for two-ninety-seven to three-oh-one First Street.
Voted Nicholas Trami.
Counsel, good evening.
Uh, good evening. How are you?
I expected Mr. Joseph tonight.
I know, I know. Unfortunately, he lost his voice. He got me.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
All right, good evening. I'm joining you from my phone, getting a little bit of issues with my my webcam here, but I've got it all up. So Nicholas Trami appearing for the applicant, Joseph Caparoli. Property is three-oh-one First Street, and as we had just said, it is a subdivision of the existing property. So just to give a bit of orientation, the property is located on the corner of First and Coles. It's in the NC zone. The applicant is proposing to subdivide the existing approximately fifty-by-seventy-five-foot property into two. It'll end up being non-conforming lots. One lot is thirty-one by fifty about, and the other lot would be forty-four by fifty. In order to accomplish this, the applicant is requesting minor subdivision approval with variances for minimum lot size, minimum lot depth, minimum rear yard setback. So it sounds like a lot when we see the the application or when we see the 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 plot plan will be able to kind of understand this a little bit better. The applicant is requesting the subdivision because the existing building that's located on the lot was deemed historically significant. So it seems that a better path to developing the parcel would be to sort of peel off that historically significant building, and then we'll be left with a large vacant parcel in which to build. So that subdivision does preserve the existing building, and it does allow the applicant to separately develop the parcel that remains. We have a couple of experts this evening. We've got Gregory Gallus. He's our surveyor, and we'll be hearing from him first. And we have Carolyn Wurstel, who's our planner, and she'll kind of take us through the planning aspects of it. Hopefully, we've got a pretty vanilla application, and and we'll move through it quickly.
Thanks, counsel.
So chairman, if I may, I am received the affidavit of publication proof of mailing with respect to the application P twenty-one dash one-fifty-eight. The applicant was originally scheduled to be heard in March and has been carried correctly through this evening. I've had the opportunity to review it. All does appear to be in order, and we can mark it as a one for the record.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Do we have Gregory available? I see him up here. Greg, if you want to just unmute, turn your video on.
Oh, there you go. All right.
Who's the video?
Say something. We hear you.
Hear you.
Just working on the video.
Sure. There we go. All right, that's perfect. I just want to swear in before you go. All right, if you can raise your right hand. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight is gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Director, could you state and spell your name, please?
It's Gregory Gallus, G R E G O R Y, Gallus, G A L L A S.
Thank you.
Mr. Gallus, good evening. Your license is current in the state of New Jersey tonight?
I am licensed for thirty years and good standing.
Good enough for us. Thank you. You're qualified.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Gregory, would you mind just taking us through the site, please?
Sure, some of it's gonna be repetitive to what Nick just said. It's an existing property located on the southerly corner of Cole and First Street, known as Lot One, Block one-two-seven-oh-two. Currently contains in two-thousand-seven-hundred, uh, three-thousand, rather, seven-hundred-and-fifty square feet. The existing four-story building is at the corner of that property, and that's going to be proposed, Lot one-point-one, to be subdivided and contain one-thousand-five-hundred-and-fifty square feet. The vacant property directly to the east of that, having frontage on First Street, be known as Lot one-point-two, and would contain an area of twenty-two-hundred square feet. Not much, too much more to say. I I think on my end, existing building, like I said, on the corner property with with the vacant property. The dimensions vacant property is fifty by forty-eight.
All right. All right, thank you, Mr. Gallus.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Uh, we've just got Carolyn.
Okay.
Wurstel, she's our planner, and she'll briefly give us some points on the property.
Okay, let's swear in, Ms. Wurstel.
Do you swear any testimony you give tonight is gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Do.
And for the record, could you please state and spell your name?
Uh, it's Carolyn Wurstel, W O R S T E L L.
Thank you.
Ms. Wurstel, good evening. Always a pleasure. Your license is current tonight?
It is current.
Okay, thank you. You're qualified.
Great, thank you. If I may, I'm just gonna quickly share my screen. It will just pop up the the survey, which was just briefly discussed. It will help just illuminate some of the variances that we're requesting this evening. So as was mentioned, we have a application to subdivide this lot. As you can see, it is currently a fifty-by-seventy-five-foot lot, so it's seventy-five feet on First Street and Fifty Street, fifty feet on Cole Street. We are looking for several variances. We're looking for a minimum lot size variance for both side lots, proposed lots. What we're proposing is subdividing a three-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty-square-foot lot into a fifteen-hundred, one-thousand-five-hundred-and-fifty-square-foot lot, which would be proposed Lot one-point-one. And a two-thousand-two-hundred-square-foot lot, which would be proposed Lot one-point-two. The intention, as discussed, is to subdivide to allow the existing parking lot, which is here on what would be proposed Lot one-point-two, to be redeveloped while preserving the existing mixed-use building on proposed Lot one-point-one. A new building cannot be developed on the existing parking lot without the subdivision, as only one principal structure is permitted per lot under the city ordinance. As the existing property is less than five-thousand square feet, there's no requirement for parking to be provided per the NC district requirements, as well as this project site is located in transit for each portion of the Jersey City, just one-third of a mile from Throat Street Pass Station. So there there's no need for there to be parking, and it would be a benefit to allow this to be redeveloped for something else. Proposed Lot one-point-one would provide sufficient space for the existing building and plus a five-foot side yard setback, as there are existing windows along this portion, this this facade of the building. Proposed Lot one-point-two at twenty-two-hundred or twenty-two-hundred square feet, which are yeah, twenty-two-hundred square feet would be substantially in similar to lot size requirements, the NC district. It's about eighty-eight percent of the required twenty-five-hundred square feet. And both of these lots are consistent with the existing lot that's also adjacent here on First Street, Lot Two, which is a twenty-five-by-fifty-foot lot. The minimum lot depth we would be proposing here would be fifty feet. With the with the subdivision, what is was originally the front of the building, consider the front of the building, which is actually on Cole Street, is now becoming a side, and so the fronts of both of these lots would now be on First Street. The existing building itself here does actually have its entrance here on First Street. So the the lot would now actually match the orientation of the building as it exists today. So this would result in a maximum lot depth of fifty feet for both of these lots, which, as I said, is consistent with the adjacent lot here on First Street, which also has an existing fifty-foot lot depth. And we're also seeking a rear yard variance with this proposed subdivision. And with the changing from the front of the the lots from going from Coles to First Street for the existing building, what was originally a side lot line here on Cole Street now becomes a rear. In the NC district, a zero-foot side yard setback is permitted. However, there is a requirement for a a rear yard setback. So what was originally a conforming condition will now become a non-conforming condition, although there is no physical change to the buildings themselves. Um, overall, the benefits of this proposed subdivision outweigh the detriments. We're using, gonna be preserving the existing mixed-use building, which has been deemed historic and allowing for future redevelopment of a parking lot in a transit-rich portion of downtown Jersey City, which is supports the city's twenty-twenty-one master plan land use principle to strengthen neighborhood-oriented commercial areas and making the city less reliant on the automobile. Granting the requested variances will advance the purposes of the land use law consistent with purpose A, by appropriate land use or development of land by allowing redevelopment of parking lot in the NC district. It would provide adequate air, an open space, consistent with purpose C by providing the five-foot setback for the existing windows and would be promote a desirable visual environment consistent with purpose I by allowing for future redevelopment of a parking lot. Overall, we, the requested variances will not result in a substantial detriment to the general welfare, substantial impairment to the intent and purpose of the zoning plan or zoning ordinance. As I said, the proposed subdivision would allow for future development of an underlived parking lot and preserve an existing mixed-use building consistent with the intents of the NC district. And proposed subdivision could support the city's twenty-twenty-one master planned land use principles.
Okay, thanks, Ms. Wurstel. Um, anybody, any questions? Okay, thank you. We appreciate it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That does conclude our direct testimony.
Okay, thank you, counsel. So at this time, let's open it up for public comment. If anybody's here from the public that wants to comment on this application for two-ninety-seven to three-oh-one First Street, if you could raise your hand. If you were calling in and you want to comment on this application, please press star nine to raise your hand. Anybody from public?
Mr. Chair, I don't see any public. I move to close the public.
Okay, public is, motion is made, and seconded public is closed. Francisco, this is your night, man.
Approval with conditions.
And counsel, you're okay with those conditions?
Yeah, we've we've read the conditions and we're comfortable with them. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion at this time. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion at this time to approve case P two-one dash one five eight as presented to the board.
Seconded.
Okay, motion is made and seconded.
Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Aye.
Council President Waterman.
Aye.
And Chairman Langston.
Yeah, I, I think the variances are more than warranted. We're taking an impervious parking lot away from the neighborhood and replacing it with housing that's near transit. So I think that's the case. I think it's plain and simple, and I go that.
Motion carries all in favor.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Thank you, Council.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, it's seven twenty-two. I think this will be a good spot to take a break. Let's take a ten-minute break. We'll be back at seven thirty-two, everybody.
I won't be back, Chris. I'm.
Sorry, Joyce. Thank you. It's a perfect spot to take a break.
It is.
All right. Thank you. Enjoy your night. Take care.
Bye-bye.
Thanks, Siri. All right, so let's call item thirteen on the agenda is case P two-two dash zero three-two was a preliminary and final major site plan amendment for addresses two fifty-eight to two eighty-two Sixteenth Street and three eleven and three twelve Seventeenth Street, and also three oh five Cole Street.
Chairman Donald Pepe, on behalf of the applicant, I was on mute. I tried to stop you before you read it. My engineer, my engineer had a little bit of an emergency. He said he's ten minutes out from home. Could I slide back while that?
We could do that.
Thank you. I appreciate the courtesy.
Yeah, we'll bring you right up after the next application. So let's move on to item fourteen is case P two-one dash one-two-five, case P two-one dash one-two-six, and also case P two-one dash one-two-seven is a plan amendment, major subdivision, preliminary and final major, and would see variances for one constellation place, chapel out.
Good evening, Commissioners. Before I go on the record, Cam, I have Eric Balu on my team, Joe Malillo, Ben Kazdin from KTG Architects, Patricia Mayo Booker, also from the same firm, Ed Colling, Morgan Karp, and Rihanna Kirchhoff. Those are, those are all the folks that I hope you can find out there.
Okay, so I couldn't find Joe, and after that, it kind of derailed me promoting everyone. So if they could raise their hands, that would help. All right, everybody's up there.
All right. Okay, thank you, Cam. Okay, Mr. Chairman, are we ready?
Yes, go ahead, Council.
All right, good evening, Chairman and Commissioners, Council and staff. My name is Jim McCann from the Law Firm of Connel Foley in Jersey City. I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant Port Liberté Apartments LLC in connection with property situated on Chapel Avenue, adjacent to the existing Port Liberté community. The property is Block Two Seven Five Oh Three, Lots Thirteen, Fourteen, Sixteen, and Seventeen, all of which are located in the Cave and Point redevelopment plan. The project that we are proposing to you tonight and requesting approval of is a five-story building with four hundred and one market rate residential units with a seven-story parking garage containing six hundred and two parking spaces and your standard associate and associated on and off-site improvements. Now, this is one project, but as you saw, there are three applications before you tonight. For the record, case P twenty-one one twenty-seven is an application for, is an application seeking an approval of a preliminary and final major site plan approval for the project. Case P twenty-one one twenty-six is an application seeking a preliminary and final major subdivision approval for the project. The purpose of the subdivision, very simply, is to consolidate the development lots and realign a portion of Chapel Avenue for possible future dedication. The development lots being Lots Sixteen and Seventeen, and the Chapel Avenue lots being Thirteen and Fourteen. And then the last application is a little bit different for Jersey City. It's P twenty-one one twenty-five. It's an application to amend the Port Liberté Master Development Plan. The Cave and Point redevelopment plan has within it a master plan requirement. The master plan was prepared many, many years ago, back in, last amended back in two thousand and four. And I'm going to eventually introduce Ed Colling and give you a little bit more detail on the master redevelopment plan, but for purposes of introduction, it works hand-in-hand with the redevelopment plan, and together they regulate development on a site-by-site basis, but they also regulate development on a community-wide basis in the Port Liberté community. We're going to present all three applications in a single presentation. However, at the end of the hearing, we are going to ask you to vote on all three applications separately. Now, there's one error in the agenda. The agenda does reference C variances for this application, but there are no variances. We're not asking for any variances or deviations. We believe our application fully complies with the redevelopment plan as well as the master plan. And having said that, I'm going to now defer to Council because we did notice for this case under the MLUL and the JCLDO, I filed three separate notice packages, Council, one under each application number. Can you confirm receipt? They were filed on March sixteenth of two thousand twenty-two.
So Council, first, let me address the agenda. The agenda that I'm looking at for this evening is not indicating that there are variances in connection with the applications with respect to the notices. Case P two-one dash one-two-five, I'm in receipt of an affidavit of publication proof of mailing with respect to notice on that case. I've reviewed it. It does appear to be in order. So we're going to mark that as A one for the record. Case P two-one dash one-two-six, I am in receipt of the affidavit of publication proof of mailing with respect to that docket number. Again, that also appears to be in order. In light of the way we're handling the matters, I'm going to ask that we mark that as a two. And P two-one dash one-two-seven, I'm receiving the affidavit of publication proof of mailing for that application as well. That also appears to be in order, no surprise, and we can mark that as a three for the record. Council, I just want to address procedurally. While the testimony is going to be done in such a manner that these applications will be heard as one presentation, it would appear to me that you would need the plan amendment, then the subdivision, then the site plan, and the vote should therefore follow in that order.
Council respectfully disagree. The, the plan amendment will come third because all that the plan amendment does is conform the master plan, the master development plan to the site plan approval that we are presenting. So if the board approves the site plan approval, it would then approve the master plan approval. If they don't approve the site plan approval, then there's no reason for them to hear or approve the site, the master plan amendment. So the way I was going to do this is to present the site plan approval, then present the subdivision approval, and then present the master plan approval.
So the subdivision as well would come after the site plan in your presentation?
Yes, because it will make more sense to the Commissioners. It will fit nicely into the presentation. If they see the project and Chapel Avenue and then see the subdivision application, it will, it will all ring a bell for them, I believe.
I have no issue as far as the presentation, but the vote at the end?
Oh, the vote, no, the vote at the end, if you would like to do the subdivision application first, followed by the site plan, followed by the master plan, I have no problem with that.
I think you'd have to, no?
Makes sense, yes.
Okay. So Chairman, with that, I have no objection procedurally to presenting the entire application or all three applications as one presentation. This way, none of the witnesses are tripping over each other or need to be brought back after the fact. It's smoother and cleaner that way, and then we can handle the vote when we get there in the manner that me and Council just discussed.
Okay, thank you, Council. Sounds good.
Okay, I think before we start our presentation, there's, there's been some community outreach that I should make the board aware of. The applicants, my clients, back in two thousand and one, which seems like a long time ago, when they commenced the thought of developing this project, they did reach out for the Port Liberté Homeowners Association, which is, my understanding is it's an umbrella association that represents three separate condo associations out at Port Liberté. So they reached out for that, that HOA board. They notified them that they were interested in developing the site we're going to talk about tonight. They presented some plans to both the board as well as a subcommittee that the HOA formed. And as a result of those presentations, they did make some changes to the project in terms of architecture, materials, and colors. So what you're going to see tonight, what you're going to see presented tonight is as the result of some dialogue that occurred with the HOA. Furthermore, the applicants in the HOA have agreed to continue to stay in communication. If this project is approved and it goes into the construction phase, they will work together to handle construction issues. As far as municipal council outreach, my clients, the applicant and myself, we did reach out and meet with Councilwoman Denise Ridley because this project is in her ward. We presented the project to her informally. After our presentation, she, in fact, helped us orchestrate a community meeting that we had with the entire Port Liberté community. It was done by Zoom. My clients presented their project, and we got, we heard some input from the residents of the Port Liberté community. And then finally, my clients are the conditional designated redevelopers of this site. They appeared before the Jersey City Redevelopment Agency, made a presentation for this project to that agency, and they were designated by the agency on February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two. So, so we have been around town before we got to this board. As far as witnesses tonight, I have Eric Balu from Inside Engineering, civil engineer. He will testify in terms of the site plan, the subdivision, and the master plan application. Joe Malillo from Malillo Bauer and Carmen Landscaping, Ben Kazdin from KTGY Architecture testifying about the architecture for the building with the assistance of Patricia Mayo Booker, Ed Colling, Dresner Robin Planner for the Master Plan, and Rihanna Kercher from Dolan and Dean is our traffic engineer. So they all will probably be, will be testifying tonight. We have a slideshow that we're going to present to you based partially on filed plans, based partially on some colorized filed plans and some overhead views of the Port Liberté community. In terms of plans that we are asking for approval tonight, there's been a number of them posted on the web portal, so I'd just like to say the plans that we are asking to be approved tonight are Malillo and Bauer, Malillo Bauer Carmen Landscape Architecture Plans filed February eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two. It's eleven sheets, L one through L eleven. There are supplement sheets, inset revision L six, showing a six-foot decorative privacy fence to enclose a courtyard on the north side of the building. There's an inset revision L three A we're asking approval of dated April fifth, two thousand twenty-two, showing an additional four-foot-high fence and landscaping to screen some transformers. KTGY architectural plans also dated February eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two, including rendering solar system plans, a shadow study, and a visual impact study. Inside engineering site plans with signage package last dated February eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two, twenty sheets, C one hundred through C nine hundred. And Inside also prepared the subdivision plan, which is one sheet dated October fifth, two thousand twenty-one. They also prepared the amended master plan, which is dated February eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two. That's also one sheet. That's what we're asking approval of. And if the Commissioners have no questions about anything I've said so far, I'll go right into my testimony.
Please, go ahead, Council.
All right, my first witness is Eric Balu, and Morgan, if you're out there, could you put the slideshow up, please?
And Eric, I'll swear in. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight? It's going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
For the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Eric Balu, E R I C, Balu, B A L L O U.
Thank you.
Mr. Balu, good evening. We've qualified you. I don't know how many times now. Your license is current tonight?
It's in current and good standing.
Okay, thank you. You're qualified again.
I greatly appreciate it.
So Eric, before you, before you proceed, you prepared the civil site plans for this application, correct?
Correct. I prepared the site plans, the subdivision, and the master plan.
And in preparing all those plans, you took into consideration the Cave and Point Master, Cave and Point Redevelopment Plan?
I have.
As well as the master development plan that we discussed?
That is correct.
As well as the Jersey City Land Development Ordinance?
As I always do, yes.
All right, please proceed.
All right, excellent. So this first exhibit is really just a perspective, more of a cover sheet, a title sheet to the project. We advanced to the next train. So this is a regional context exhibit. Our project site, you can see, is highlighted in yellow where it says labeled "project site." To the west of that, we have the Turnpike and Cave and Point Roadway, as well as you can see, we're adjacent to the Liberty National Golf Course as well as Port Liberté and the Port Liberté Ferry Terminal. So this is to give a bigger picture understanding of where the site is. The, the next exhibit, this is an existing site aerial. Again, the project site is highlighted in yellow. This gives a more of an enlargement view, so you can really see how close we are to the Port Liberté community, how we're blending with that, as well as we have the Liberty National Golf Course to the west, and we have the Clermont Channel is to our south.
And Eric, the site itself is vacant land with a paved area, correct?
Correct, yes. It's shown in the exhibit, correct. It's a vacant land with the parking, the paved area. The next exhibit, this is the site layout plan, C three hundred, that's in your plan set. This is just to give an understanding of the plan I'll be speaking about, but I'm going to quickly advance to the next slide, which is a colored version of this. So this is a much better way to actually go through and go through the presentation.
The Commissioners, this is actually Malillo and Bauer's rendered site plan for The commissioners, this is actually Malillo and Bauer's rendered site plan for landscaping, but it's entirely consistent, Eric, with your site plan, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Right. So we'll go through some of the surrounding roadway. So to the right of the screen, to the south, is Independence Way. Right now, Independence Way sort of serves as the main access for the western portion of the Port Liberté community. And then along the back of the building, we have Constellation Place, which is another existing street within Port Liberté. And then to the left of that, we have Freedom Way, which right now is really an unimproved street that we'll talk about a little bit more in detail. And then the street along the western side, along the bottom, that's Chapel Avenue. Chapel Avenue is the main access roadway for this entire site.
And Eric, the other streets that you mentioned, they are private roads owned and operated by the Port Liberté HOA, correct?
That is correct. And even though we're talking about the roadways that are within the private community of Port Liberté, we are not having any access to those streets for many kind of driveway or curb cuts. We're not proposing any connections within the existing Port Liberté community. As Mr. McCann referenced, we are within the Cave-in-Point Redevelopment Plan. We conform with all of the requirements. Just for reference, this zone allows up to buildings up as high as 15 stories, but the proposal we have in front of you is much with only a five-story building. Go through a little bit of detail of how the, the building is sort of going to be serviced. We have the service drive, a drop-off lobby access roadway on that western side that provides one-way access to be able to park for drop-offs and pickups. Delivery vehicles will be able to stage there, as well as we have parallel parking on the other side for prospective tenants. So anyone looking to rent can also park along that, that drive aisle that we proposed along the lobby frontage. As we move towards the east, we've also have a loading area. This is about a 22 by 48 loading zone area that will serve as access for move in and move out, as well as the, the solid waste needs of the project. In the center, we have a parking garage to serve the facility. So we have access for that, also off of Chapel Avenue that provides access to the parking garage. The parking garage, you know, provides the needed parking of 602 spaces. This zone has a requirement of one and a half spaces per unit. All the stalls will be in accordance with the redevelopment plan dimensions. As we go further to the east, there's also, we have an additional loading zone area. It's a little bit smaller in size, about 20 by 20, but that provides another loading opportunity and solid waste removal access point for the project. As I said earlier, we're not, that are the only connections that we have for the project is off of Chapel Avenue. We're not proposing any driveway improvements on the adjacent streets. One of the things we are doing as part of the street improvements, though, is Freedom Way. So Freedom Way right now is really just as a curb cut into it off of Chapel Avenue, but it's not fully paved or improved. So we're going to fully pave and improve the roadway and also install a guardhouse that was previously proposed as well. So this will give that western portion of Port Liberté two access points into the community.
And, and Eric, this is an improvement that is, has been worked out in coordination with the HOA, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
In regards to engineering aspects of the project, we are within a flood zone. The preliminary flood zone is up at elevation 13. So we've elevated the, the building and the garage to elevation 14 to meet the NJDEP requirements. Stormwater improvements will be addressed through this project by improvements of the stormwater system within Chapel Avenue. And actually, all our stormwater actually discharges to within the golf course to the south of this. So there won't be any stormwater from ours going within Port Liberté's community, where actually be discharging directly into the golf course area. Sanitary sewer, there's an existing pump station that handles only a couple of the Port Liberté buildings that was always built in anticipation of this future development, full buildout of the project. So our, our plan will be to gravity go into that pump station to handle our sanitary sewer needs. Water, so water is one of the, the major significant upgrades that we're going to have for, that'll assist this project, but also assist the overall community. The J3 Way has required and requested us to do a secondary water main from the intersection of Cave-in-Point Road and Chapel Road and run a second 16-inch water main all the way down to the Port Liberté community. Right now, it's fed off of a single line. This will give a redundant power, redundant water supply to the entire Port Liberté community. So it will be a benefit in regards to water supply. So that really is, as a summary of the site plan, the architect and landscape architect will go through more detail of the site plan.
So Eric, I missed one thing. Where's the main entrance of the building?
The main entrance is right there, being highlighted right now. There's, the lobby access is right in that location there.
Okay. And there are two setback requirements for the project. One is, is a setback off Chapel Avenue 20 feet. We comply with that, correct?
Correct, as well as the required setback from Route 185 is 60 feet. You know, we're well beyond that distance separation to greatly exceed the setback requirement.
And, and, and we've determined that the parking requirement is 1.5 parking spaces per residential unit, correct?
Correct, so all our parking that's necessary is all included within the garage to meet the parking requirements.
So that's why we have more parking spaces than we do units because of that requirement, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and you pointed out that the, the zoning requirement in, in Cave-in-Point allows a building up to 15 stories. We're five stories for the building and seven stories for the garage. Is that what the plans show?
That's correct.
And we're within the density allowances in both the redevelopment plan and the master plan?
Correct, we can go through that with the master plan, but we're actually building less units on this property in question than was actually previously approved in the master plan.
Okay, and how about the green area ratio requirement for the project?
We are compliant, you know, through a different combination of what the landscape architect has done with plants, we have open space area, so we're compliant with the 0.25 requirement for this area.
And as far as signage, you filed a signage package. Do all the signs comply with the redevelopment plan requirements?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
So should I go on to the subdivision part of the application?
Yes, I was going to say, if the commissioners, Mr. Chairman, if the commissioners have any questions about what's been testified to, we could stop now or we could move on. We're going to explain the subdivision application to you.
Let's, yeah, let's take it piece by piece, just so we don't lose track of our questions.
Okay.
Being said, I have none. Anybody else, any questions so far? Okay, thank you, everybody. All right, Mr. Ballou, let's, let's move on.
Thank you. So the, the next slide is the black and white version of the major subdivision plan. We find that sort of hard, you know, with all the, the black and white is sort of hard to distinguish what's actually being accomplished with the, with the subdivision plan. So we've created a couple exhibits to help better define the subdivision application.
So before you go on, though, that is the actual filed subdivision plan, correct, Eric?
That is correct, that's correct.
Okay, go ahead.
Excellent. So this is a subdivision exhibit showing the existing conditions of the four lots. So we have existing Lot 13, which is being shown in green.
Counsel, do you have to mark any of these? And is this presentation going to be submitted for purposes of the record?
Yes, the entire presentation will be submitted for purposes of the record. Yes, we, we can, can we mark it as one document at the end?
Yeah, if this wasn't submitted, obviously, and we need to mark it, let's mark the entire slide presentation. I'm up to A4.
Yep, that's fine. Some of it is part of our filed plans and some of it is colorized to make a presentation. So yes, let's mark the whole thing as A4. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you. So, so Lot 13 is the lot we have adjacent to the Claremont Channel. Lot 14 is predominantly a lot that's actually basically Chapel Avenue. Lot 16 is one of the lots where the, the proposed apartment building is going to be. And then Lot 17 in blue is really, almost really the main reason of why we're doing this subdivision. You can see a portion of Lot 17 actually goes across Chapel Avenue. So it's a lot that's part of the building lot, but now it has a portion onto Chapel Avenue, so spanning that. So we can advance to the proposed subdivision. So this is taking the three lots, four lots that exist down to three lots. So 13.01 has a slight adjustment of the lot line. Lot 1401 that we're proposing now, you can see, is all of Chapel Avenue doesn't include any of that future apartment lot. When we made the adjustments, we then merged Lot 16 and 17, formulating this new Lot 16.01. So by shifting the lot lines, removing a lot, we were able really to create one lot for the apartment building, take all the Chapel Avenue portion of it onto one particular lot, which required a slight adjustment to that Lot 13.01. So at the end of the day, this will be a much better lot line scenario than what we have today.
Commissioners, that's our subdivision presentation. I, I hope that makes it clear that really the main purpose of that subdivision was to get that little piece of the, one of the old lots off, back off of Chapel Avenue, which is really a right-of-way. So that's the main purpose for that.
Sure. Anybody, any questions on the subdivision yet?
No.
Okay, go ahead, counsel.
All right, thank you, Eric. I'm going to bring Eric back when we get to the master plan amendment, but for now, we're, we can move on to the architectural presentation. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you, Mr. Ballou.
So my first witness from architecture is Mr. Ben Kazdin. He's an architect from KTGY Architects. Ben, are you out there?
He's here. Let me just, yep, let me just swear in, right? Oh, I'm sorry, guys, you can't see me. Hi, Ben. I just swear in. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight? It's going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
My name is Benjamin Kazdin, K-A-S-D-A-N.
Thank you.
Mr. Kazdin, good evening. Your license is current in New Jersey tonight?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, you're qualified.
Thank you.
Ben, are you the architect of record for this, for the project we're presenting to the board tonight?
Yes, I am.
And did you play, prepare all the architecture plans for this project in conjunction with your colleague Patricia Mayo Booker?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, and they were all prepared under your license, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and you're, in preparing the plans, you reviewed the Cave-in-Point Redevelopment Plan?
Yes, of course.
As well as the Jersey City Land Development Ordinance?
Yes.
And, and you've incorporated those requirements into your plans?
Yes, we have.
And the plans that we're going to present to the board tonight are, are your actual architecture plans or their renderings that you prepared in, in conjunction with your plans, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
I didn't know you spoke Spanish. Your, your mic was on there.
And, and Ben, for part of the presentation, you, you stated you've worked with Patricia Mayo Booker, your colleague. Are you deferring to her for a portion of the presentation tonight?
Yes, Ms. Booker is going to talk about the plan, and then I'll talk about the elevations after that.
Okay, all right. Patty, are you out there?
I am.
Hi, Patricia, I see, I just want to swear in, all right? Your right hand. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight? It's going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Patricia Booker, B-O-O-K-E-R.
Thank you.
Ms. Booker, good evening. And counsel, Ms. Booker is testifying as a fact witness under Mr. Kazdin's direction, correct?
She is.
Okay, thank you, go ahead.
Okay, Patty, so you could start your presentation. Take us through the, the architectural plans.
Great, thank you. So what you're looking at here is the first floor plan of the building. The lower left-hand corner is the main entry at the corner of Chapel Ave and Freedom Way. We have space right at the front entry for pickup, drop-off, and package delivery, so that's all located on-site. We do have within the main entry, as soon as you enter the building, a few amenities, including a lounge area, a fitness room for kids, a kids' area, some work-from-home offices, conference rooms, mailroom, and package room. We also have a residential lounge on the lower right-hand corner of the building for tenant use. There are two bike storage rooms on either side of the garage totaling 201 bike storage racks as required by the zoning ordinance. The building egress is onto Chapel Ave, as well as there are a couple means of egress on Independence Avenue and Freedom Way as required for egress by building code. Task removal is along Chapel Ave, as Mr. Kazdin indicated. All of the trash is stored on-site. It will be stored within those trash rooms and pickup will be occurring on-site. We could go to the next plan. The typical floor plan is in front of you here. There are 401 homes total, including studios, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom units. The one-bedrooms and two-bedrooms do have den and loft options. The mix is comprised of about 10% studios, 42% one-bedrooms, 42% two-bedrooms, and 5% three-bedrooms. And the precast garage has been intentionally designed to be off of Chapel Ave and to be away from the condo buildings along on the other side of Constellation Place.
And Patty, the, the building itself is five stories, correct?
That's correct.
And this typical floor plan represents the second, third, fourth, and fifth floor?
It would be the third and fourth floor.
Third and fourth, okay.
Yeah.
Second, third, and fourth, okay. And in the parking garage, that's, the parking garage is seven stories, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and, and your architecture plans show 602 parking spaces?
602 parking spaces, yes.
All right, thank you.
Going on to the roof plan, this is just to show that we do have lofts, loft units that are fronting along Constellation Place, and that we do have renderings to show that a little bit better in perspective a little bit later in the presentation. And then just to mention, we do also have solar panels that are going on this roof in multiple locations. Thank you.
Okay, Patty, thank you very much. Ben, can you take over?
Yes, thank you, Patty, thank you, Jim. So this first rendering view is really the first impression that most visitors will have. This is from that corner at Chapel Avenue, and it shows that main entry amenity space. The forms coming out of some of those community meetings that Jim mentioned earlier do relate to the other buildings in the community, forms like the Manchurru Brew, some slope roof forms, oh, slope roof forms are a little bit hard to see in this view. You'll see a little bit more clearly in the next slide. But this building wants to also stand alone. It wants to have its own identity, it wants to have its own character, it has its own colors, its own materials, its own composition. And Morgan, you can go to the next slide. So the view along Chapel Avenue starts to show those slope roof forms. You can also see a glimpse of some of the TV panels that are on the roof, as well as it shows kind of this quilt of, of garage vertical fins that are screening that precast garage. We designed it so it works both at the pedestrian scale and sort of at a distance because the garage will be visible in both of those instances. Morgan, you can go to the next slide. So along Constellation, you're seeing some of the movement of the, of the building as it steps in around one of the courtyards. And it also shows a glimpse of those loft-style or mezzanine units at the top left. So when, when Patty was mentioning that the typical floor didn't represent that top floor, it shows that we have special units with, with great views, and you'll see a couple more of those in the, in the next rendering view as well. Go ahead, Morgan. So this is from, the view from Freedom Way, and so the Freedom Way has this curved geometry, and that has a direct impact into the shape of the building. And so the Freedom Way has this curved geometry and that has a direct impact into the shape of the building. And you're can see the, you can see the rooftop amenity at that, that top corner as well as some of those mezzanines. They'll have private balconies and those will have spectacular views of Manhattan skyline. The last slide in my part of the presentation for now has to do with the materials and the, and the colors. Um, and, and there's really a, a pretty simple palette. So, um, light gray brick masonry. We sort of use that to accentuate, uh, main points of entry for the building. You see that touch the ground at the main. Uh, lobby space and the secondary lobbies. Um, and then we have three different colors of cyber from it. Cement fiber siding, excuse me, uh, so charcoal gray, a light gray and a tan. And the majority of the building is clad in, in those three colors. The rooftop is, uh, charcoal gray asphalt shingles. Uh, the windows are, uh, black final. Happy to answer any questions you all have. Um, and I know we have more to present as well.
Uh, I have none at this time. Anybody else?
No.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ben and Patty. Uh, my next witness is, uh, Joe Malillo, uh, landscape architect.
Joe, how you doing?
Good evening.
I just want to spray you in, all right?
Yeah.
Do you swear any testimony you give tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, can you please state and spell your name?
Sure. Joseph Malillo, M as in Michael, E L I L L O.
Thank you.
Malillo, uh, good evening. Your license is current tonight?
Uh, yes, it is.
Okay, thanks. You're qualified.
Uh, thank you very much.
Joe, your, Joe, your firm is, uh, is the landscape architect of record for this project?
Uh, yes, that's correct.
And your firm prepared all the landscape plans that I referred to before, uh, as part in, in connection with this application?
Yes, we did.
Okay, and, um, when you prepared them, you took into consideration the Caving Point redevelopment plan?
Yes, we did.
JCR, JCLDO also?
Yes.
And, um, the JC Jersey City Forestry Standards also?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, Joe. Um, all right, please proceed.
Thank you. Uh, good evening. Uh, Morgan, could you advance to the next slide, please? So this exhibit will look familiar. This is the one that Mr. Blue, uh, used, uh, for a portion of his testimony. Uh, it's the rendered site plan that we submitted. Um, I'm just gonna walk you through, uh, we'll do a, have a walk around the property, if you will, on the exterior of the building first. Uh, so, uh, Mr. Blue had already described the vehicular movement, uh, on the site. I don't wanna waste the board's time going over that again. Uh, just in certain areas on the drop-off loop at the, at the lobby entry, there is some decorative pavement. Uh, the, associated with that, both at the apron as it comes out to, uh, Chapel Avenue, uh, as well as, uh, different areas. That's throughout at the main lobby entry. Uh, the sidewalk materials, a five-foot concrete sidewalk along Chapel Avenue that is consistent with the material that is directly across the street. On Chapel Ave that exists today. Um, as we make our way, uh, plan east from the drop-off area. There are a few residential units east of the lobby that have, uh, private or their own access off of the, the sidewalk. That, uh, is adjacent to the drop-off. Uh, additionally, east of the garage, there are a few residential units that also have private access directly from the sidewalk. Um, to the east of that, at the intersection of Independence Way and Chapel Avenue. Uh, outside of the bike storage and community room is a raised plaza with decorative paving. Um, both Independence Way and Freedom Way will have five-foot wide sidewalks. That have material that is in keeping with the materials of Port Liberté. So those sidewalks would be a decorative favor that matches what is, uh, existing today, the, the brick material that's there today. Excuse me. Um, moving on to landscape, uh, we've prepared a, a plan that, that proposes, uh, both street trees. And, uh, a mix of lush, uh, vegetation, uh, around the building and foundation both and as well as within the courtyards. Uh, the street trees along Chapel Avenue are in keeping with the forestry standards, but with a few. Light deviations for spacing and quantity, and that is due really to avoiding utilities. Uh, and keeping the spacing from utilities that are in the forestry standards. And we have the many curb cuts and openings along Chapel Avenue to keep all the vehicular traffic on Chapel Avenue and not entering. Uh, the, the Port Liberté development. Um, so that reduces the amount of area to, to plant the trees. So in some areas, the trees are a little tighter than this, just a little tighter than the spacing required. Uh, and but we, we, we're not able to get the quantity that was, uh, desired in the forestry standards. Because of the, like, as I mentioned, the utilities and the curb cuts. The species of trees on the balance of, the balance of the streets, while they're not technically public right of ways, we were, we are in keeping with the forestry standards. Get, um, for all species, uh, except along Constellation Place. Where we have proposed. Excuse me, where we've proposed lemon plane trees, uh, that's not currently on the forestry standards list of species. And the reason that tree species was selected is because it matches what is directly across the street. Uh, we're trying to, to, uh, stay within the fabric of the community and, uh, promote that same look. And be sensitive to what is existing. All plantings proposed are native and adaptive species. Uh, the landscape design, as Mr. Blue testified earlier, complies with the G A R requirements, the green area ratio. Lastly, on the, in front of the parking garage or to the south of the parking garage adjacent to Chapel Avenue. You will note there are some transformers located, uh, in that vicinity. As part of the redevelopment guidelines, those transformers are to be screened. We've proposed screening. Uh, per the, the redevelopment guidelines. In addition, a four-foot fence is being proposed. The height of that fence is dictated by the, uh, land use ordinance, uh, for front yards, which is four feet in height. So again, a four-foot high fence immediately south of those transformers. And then a, uh, evergreen screen between the fence and the sidewalk to help screen those utilities. Lighting, uh, street lighting has been proposed on all four sides of the project. Uh, the light fixture is in keeping with, to match what is already existing in Port Liberté throughout the community. Uh, however, the, the lights will be an LED. An LED fixture, uh, as some of the existing fixtures in Port Liberté are, are pre the, the LED generation. Uh, finally, there are a number of amenities available to the residents of this community, of this development. Um, so the, the residences building will have access to an area immediately off of the lobby. There's an outdoor lounge area, uh, that is screened from the street and surrounded and, and has a six-foot high fence. Uh, with planted screening. Uh, there is an internal courtyard with a swimming pool, uh, fireplaces, loud, um, barbecue grills. Um, and a nice shade structure, uh, amenity for the residents of this building to use. Um, moving to the east of that, there is a three-sided courtyard that has a dog run. The dog run is heavily screened with, uh, a solid evergreen, uh, solid evergreen trees. Street trees, uh, and a fence, uh, between the dog run and the street. It is only accessed from the, uh, from within the building itself. Uh, lastly, uh, there is a fourth courtyard area, uh, for, which ha- adds a little more. Um, options for, for people. There's some lawn to recreate on. This is. Uh, ha- also has barbecue grills and fire tables as well for the residents to use and enjoy. Uh, additionally, there are some swings in this area also to add a level of, of play for the residents here. That, uh, that, that concludes my landscape testimony for this project. If the board has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
All right, thank you, sir. Um, yeah, I have no questions. Anybody else?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, my next witness is, uh, Rihanna Kirchhoff from, uh, Dolan and Dean. Um, we did file as part of this application, uh, a traffic impact analysis. Um, we did that, um, even though it's an as-of-right project. We, we did that to comply with the checklist requirements i- in the, uh, in the land development ordinance. Um, so I thought it would be appropriate to have, uh, Rihanna make a brief presentation regarding her, uh, analysis. So she's my next witness, please.
Hi, Rihanna, I wanna swear you in, all right? If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear the testimony you give tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Rihanna Kirchhoff, R I A N N A. Kirchhoff is K I R C H H O F.
Thank you.
Ms. Kirchhoff, good evening. Um, I don't recall qualifying you, have we?
No, I have not been before this board previously.
Uh, if you could, just give us a rundown of your background and your qualifications.
Sure. I'm a senior project engineer at Dolan and Dean Consulting Engineers. I graduated from Stevens Institute of Technology with a bachelor's of, in engineering and civil engineering. I'm a licensed professional in the state of New Jersey in engineering and I've been employed in the traffic engineering industry for approximately ten years.
Okay, and that license is current tonight?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. You're qualified.
Uh, you can proceed, Ri- Rihanna.
Okay. Uh, so Dolan and Dean has been part of, uh, development applications in Jersey City, uh, spanning back since nineteen ninety-seven. So our company is really familiar with the Port Liberté area. And, um, we've been a part of the engineering teams that did the Liberty National Golf Course. The residences at Liberty National and SciTech City, just to name a few. Um, as part of our engagement with the applicant, we were to evaluate traffic conditions, uh, for the current site application for four hundred and one apartment units. And as part of that evaluation, our firm conducted traffic counts. I calculated traffic projections for the proposed use and examined, uh, the ill, the ability for the roadway network to accommodate. The additional traffic generated by proposed development. Um, our traffic counts were conducted in February twenty eighteen. Uh, as you all know, because of the pandemic, traffic volumes across the state have decreased. So the utilization of the twenty eighteen volumes for our analysis presents, um, a, a conservative rep- representation. Of what traffic conditions would be like. Um, our traffic generation for the proposed residential development was based on, uh, rates calculated. From the actual traffic generated by the adjacent, um, units, uh, Port Liberté. And it was oriented to the site based on existing traffic patterns. Um, our study also assumes a continuous background growth. Um, as a note, actual traffic conditions on Caving Point Road have not kept pace with these projections. Based on hysterical, historical data that our, uh, firm has conducted. Uh, since nineteen ninety-seven, we conducted, uh, additional counts in two thousand one, two thousand four and two thousand and eighteen. But for a conservative analysis, our study includes an additional background, which represents, um. The projection of traffic conditions without the traffic associated with the subject, the subject application. And what our analysis found was that Caving Point Road and Chapel Road, um, intersection and the site driveway. Reveals that there'll be favorable operations and a future level of service, uh, see or better with minimal additional delay. In with the addition of the site traffic. And so it's easy to conclude that the roadway, um, has adequate capacity. To accommodate the additional traffic generated by the proposed use. And that is all I have for the direct, uh, direct testimony.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you.
Chairman, unless the board has questions, uh, of my traffic expert.
Um, I don't. Anybody else?
I, I do, uh, Mr. Chair. Just a quick question. Uh, Rihanna, did you? I know going back on Chapel Hill, all the way down to that football stadium where a lot of football, high school football, uh, players play football. Um, did, was the traffic analyzed during football games? Cause I know trying to get there is unreal.
Our traffic analysis did not account for, um, any game day activity. We understand that there might be, um. You know, some congestion, but what we understand is that it is some, it's unrelated to the project. But we think that, um, arrival and departure from the games are going to be, um, you know, limited. And not a long-term experience, but we did not account for that in our analysis.
Okay, and then the other thing is you do know that at the end of that, that road, we just opened up a new, uh, restaurant as well. Um, was your analysis done before the restaurant opened or? Or after?
Our analysis was done before the restaurant opened.
Yeah. All right, I'm just, I do have those two concerns, cause I, I'm a, I cover football for St. Peter's Prep as a physician. And it's, it's very difficult to get in, in that access to that road, uh, that's usually b- blocked and packed all the way back to the, uh. Really to the, to the park. So it's, it's just really interesting how, um, that's gonna be on game day for more people coming in, in, and through there. And accessing it too, especially if it's an emergency and at that bill at that, um, place, if you have a football game. Um, it's tough to get through, but okay, thank you, Rihanna. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Orlando. Um, anybody else? Um, I.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. My met, next witness is, um, Ed Colling.
Sure.
Hi, Ed, how you doing?
I'm doing good, thank you.
Um, I just want to spray you in. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
For the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
First name is Edward. Last name is K O L L I N G. It's Colling.
Mr. Colling, good evening. Uh, your license is, I assume, still current tonight?
Yes, the, uh, my license is current and in good standing.
Okay, thank you. You're qualified again.
Uh, Mr. Colling, you have reviewed the Caving Point redevelopment plan in preparation of tonight's hearing?
Uh, yes, I have.
And you've reviewed the, uh, the master development plan for the Port Liberté community?
Uh, yes.
And you're familiar with all the plans, the, the, the architecture plans, civil site plans, subdivision plans? That are before the board tonight?
That, that is correct.
And you've also reviewed the master plan for the community that was last approved by this planning board?
Um, yes, it's on this, it's on the screen today, right now.
Okay. Take us through the, uh, the master development plan requirements, Mr. Colling. And give us some background about what its function is.
Uh, certainly, uh, as, as Jim mentioned, the, the idea of having a master development plan is, um. Not completely unique to this redevelopment, uh, plan. There are some others in Jersey City that'll do that, but it's, it's not common. Um, this plan, uh, what the project master plan actually serves two purposes. Um, one is that it can, uh, monitor or track the redevelopment process. As related to the uses that are developed on the property, uh, the heights and densities and building coverages of the, of the development. Uh, over, over the course of time, because obviously this is a long, it was a very long-range project. Um, it was clear from the beginning of the redevelopment project, uh, that the redevelopment of this tract of land would take many years to implement. Uh, so the redevelopment plan regulated the permitted density, building heights and building coverage. Based on the total land area of the project area. Initial and individual phases, uh, did not need to comply individually, provided that the overall development complied. So in order to track that, again, that's why they proposed, or we proposed, uh, master plan, uh, uh. An overall master plan, so you could track that as it, as it unfolded. Um. Uh, so I would point out that the, that the master plan amendments are usually only required for. A major overhaul. Now, these amendments that you're, that the engineer is going to, uh, describe later. You'll see are rather, are actually rather minor. But given the intent of the master plan to sort of track, as I said, the, the overall. But given the intent of the master plan to sort of track, as I said, the, the overall development, we felt it was good to uh, include an amendment so that the amended master plan would stay current with the projects as it unfolded. Now, the second purpose of the project master plan uh, was to create an extended testing period for the development approvals for the proposed development. Um, again, as I mentioned, the, was clear to both the city and the redevelopment that this project would take many years to be implemented. Um, in fact, this has been gone on so long, I was the director of planning when this plan was written. And uh, so I'm very familiar with the, that thought process, that was back in nineteen eighty-four. Um, at the time, there was very little in the way of infrastructure on Cave and Point. Um, it was mostly vacant land that had been owned by the federal government. It had been used by the US Army as a staging area during both World War One and World War Two and was later declared surplus federal property. So there was, there was really insufficient water service down there, there was, there were little in the way of sewer lines, electric service, gas lines, there really wasn't much there at all. And the redeveloper and the city both recognized that a very large investment would need to be made in both time and money before to create all this new extensive uh, infrastructure uh, prior to even the first unit being built. So what we did is we came up with the idea um, of creating a twenty-year project master plan that was created and approved by the city in order to give the developer a period of assurance, so to, so to speak, following initial approvals of the redevelopment plan. This would give the developer a certain comfort level that after this initial significant investment in all the infrastructure that investment would not be wasted and they would have sufficient time to redevelop the project successfully over a period of years. And actually now, it's, we've exceeded that twenty years, we believe that uh, that, that, that twenty-year period may have passed. But that does not diminish the purpose of the project master plan for its first purpose, as I mentioned, as a mechanism to continue to track the successful implementation of the plan. And nor does it diminish any vested rights that were previously granted under that master plan and which can continue to be granted based on final uh, site plan approvals, preliminary and final site plan approvals under the current redevelopment plan and uh, the approvals under the municipal land use law. Um, and so that kind of gives you a background as to why we're going through this master plan process and why tonight we're asking the planning board to approve the latest revision to the project master plan in order to continue to monitor the overall development. Uh, and also to approve the preliminary and final site plan for the current phase of the project uh, which also includes the, the subdivision. And so that's, that's more or less the background and why we're going through the uh, this, this process this evening.
All right, thank you, Mr. Colling, uh, anybody, any questions? All right, thank you.
Um, recall Eric Ballou just for five minutes?
Sure.
I, I think I could do it in three.
Okay. So Eric, you're gonna, you're, you're still under oath and you're gonna testify about the proposed master plan, correct?
Understood, uh, so the, the previously approved master plan had an overall density of eighteen hundred and thirteen units. The subject property that we're speaking about tonight, in that area, in the previously approved master plan, it had four buildings in that area and two garages. And the buildings actually were higher, the buildings in this area previously consisted of six stories and a couple fifteen-story buildings in this area. So our plan is, is come in with, with one building, one garage, uh, and it's actually going to decrease the amount of density. So the overall density for the proposed master plan in front of you has seventeen hundred and eighteen units. So the master plan density has actually gone down by approximately ninety-five units. Uh, and then we comply with all the building coverages and the other items related to the master plan as well, and both the uh, previously approved as well as this version. Uh, so that really summarizes the, the, the plan changes that are occurring for the master plan.
So Eric, I had said before that the purpose of our master plan amendment was simply to conform the master plan to the site plan approval. Is that accurate?
It, it is, so the uh, the exact same footprint, if we were to zoom in, of the exact same footprint that we're showing in the proposed master plan is the, the exact same footprint layout that we've been presenting our site plan application for.
And, and we're not, and the project is not causing an exceedance of any of the requirements for density or lot coverage, the site plan approval is not causing an exceedance of any of the thresholds in the existing master plan.
Uh, correct, we're, this, this, our proposed plan is fully within compliance of Cave and Point with a decrease in density.
Right, right, so, so this, this confirms the decrease in density and that the lot, the building coverage is consistent with the master development plan.
Uh, correct, uh, we're allowed up to like twenty-five percent building coverage within the master plan and we're, we're in numbers less than fourteen percent with these, with the proposed master plan.
Okay, so this is for the purpose of keeping an accurate record uh, for the broader Port Liberté community, that's the purpose of this amendment, correct?
Right, as Mr. Colling stated, correct.
All right. Thank you, that uh, commissioners, that concludes my presentation.
All right, thank you, Council, um, any questions for Mr. Ballou on uh, his closing testimony there?
Nope.
All right, thank you, um, Council, I do have um, one question. And uh, I think Mr. Ballou just answered it, but uh, this no way, in no way uh, triggers the I Z O, correct?
Correct, does not.
Okay, and uh, if we could, let's stop that screen share. Okay.
Um, I have a question on, Jim asked him to, um, the architect. Um, one of them asked, I just uh, I just want to show a little classification on the layout of the architect. Um, the uh, coming out of the parking garages, it's stuff, uh, seven story garage. And then we have a five-story building. Um. I, I don't know if I'm missing it, as I keep looking in my package, there was no elevators on this project at all. Does everything walk up?
No, there, there are elevators.
They all have it, so, okay, then I'm missing it, because as much as I go through it the other day looking at it, I don't see where are the locations on your uh, plan. But you do have elevator, so basically yeah, what I'm trying to figure out is, okay, so there is a safe passage from garages to certain sections of the I would say hallways or corridors where people live.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
Patty, 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 can you just explain a little bit about where the elevators are located in the building and what they can, how they connect to the parking garage for the, for the commissioner?
Yes, there's, there's one elevator within the parking garage itself for tenant use, and then there's three within the building uh, for tenant use. Um, there, from the garage to the residential building, there's one direct entry um, on the upper uh, left-hand corner. And then on the lower right, so we have um, a good travel distance in between and we're not putting them too close together. There's another point of entry directly into the residential corridor through a stair.
Okay, I, it's just a large, it's a lot, there's a lot of walking and I, I didn't as much as I look, I couldn't find it, and I'm saying myself, okay, but yeah, it's just a matter of getting to that garage safely and to you, your area where you need to walk to, to get to, so, so, I do very much, you asked my question.
Ben, just one more thing, Ben, are the, are the elevators all shown on the architectural plans?
Yes, they're, they're there, and we can put them out more specifically.
I don't see it, okay, that's okay. I think we should.
All right, thank you, Commissioner, are you satisfied with that answer, Eddie?
Yes, yes, no, it's good.
Okay. All right, anybody else, anything?
No.
All right, thank you, Council, that's it for you?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, let's open it up for public comment at this time. If you hear from the public and you want to comment, please raise your hand, I see one up already. And if you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hands.
Promoted Nancy Shane.
Uh, Mr. Chair, just to be clear, we're uh, public is open for all three of the applications, correct?
Yes, yes, the entire presentation public is open for.
Just wanted to confirm, thank you.
Unmute, hi, sorry.
Hi Nancy, I just want to swear you in before you go, okay?
Sure.
If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight is going to be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name and give us your address, please?
Uh, Nancy Shaness, S H A N E S. I live at thirty Constitution Apartment two oh eight Jersey City in Port Liberté.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Shaness, good evening, we have three minutes for you.
Yes, thank you very much, um, I'm a homeowner at uh, Port Liberté since December of twenty, of two thousand. And I'm uh, also a member of the Port Liberté Condo Two Board, we have three different condo associations, as mentioned earlier. And I'm that repres, I'm that board representative to the HOA Board. Uh, so I just wanted to comment tonight that um, and mention that the developer, NRP and GNS sought out the HOA to set up a community meeting uh, to introduce themselves and to present their project. Um, there were also subsequent meetings with a smaller group of board members and residents uh, to discuss uh, the facades and the design and in those subsequent meetings, later meetings were held with the HOA and the community. Um, and they changed certain design elements that they've mentioned and exterior materials and architectural elements to better complement the existing three phases and the community and in the community. And just that the HOA Board um, appreciated that effort. Um, and then the only other comment, uh, which was, I think it was Commissioner Torres or mentioned about the Cave and Point Athletic Field and the impact on Chapel Avenue was that um, Commissioner Torres, I appreciate you bringing that up, it is a concern to the community.
Uh, Vice Chairman Gonzalez.
Sorry, I couldn't tell who was speaking at the time, so, the, uh, Chair Dr. Gonzalez, I appreciate you bringing that up because um, Chapel Avenue was a challenge, it's in three phases, the city owns the piece from Cave and Point Road up until that overpass for the the overpass for the golf course. And then the next phase, oh, which is under discussion tonight, owns the next phase, but I believe the city will be taking over that later. Um, and then there's a phase that the HOA maintains, which is on the other side of the canal. So it is a challenging road to get things done and we've had flooding and we have egress issues and concerns and emergencies, and I appreciate you bringing that up, Dr. Gonzalez. Uh, but I'd like the city to look at the part they own and address and, and we've asked Denise Ridley to try to coordinate a meeting to discuss that um, that area and how it leads into the community for emergency services. Uh, we used to have two roads that led into Port Liberté, uh, a resident-only road, but once the uh, and then the main Chapel Avenue Road, however, that uh, other road that ended, exited on Chapel Avenue uh, went with the golf course, so we only have one in and out, and it's a concern. But that's nothing to do with this project, it's a concern today, it'll be a bigger concern for four hundred more people living here. That's all I have.
All right, thank you, Ms. Shaness, we appreciate it.
Thank you, oh, and by the way, I thought.
Darn. I'm gonna bring her back up.
Please do.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, thank you, I, I was just.
No problem, we're sorry, we uh, we booted.
Say that I've been on, this is the fourth meeting I've attended. Um, and I thought our meetings went late, uh, but I certainly appreciate the work or does, and I've learned a lot about cannabis and what's happening in Jersey City. Yes, for me. So thank you very much.
We're sorry it took so long to get here, but we're finally here.
A lot of insight into what goes on, it, it was very.
But I love when people come down to meetings.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else from public, if you'd like to comment, please raise your hand. Once again, if you're calling in and you'd like to comment on this application for one constellation place, you can press star nine to raise your hand.
Mr. Chair, seeing the public, I move to close the public.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded, public is closed, uh, Tim, do you have anything you want to wrap up with?
Uh, yeah, just that, um, Mr. McCann uh, really worked well with planning on this, uh, gave us more than enough information, was very thorough, uh, with all the uh, different plans and everything else provided, um. I feel that the applicant is definitely in compliance with the uh, the ma, in terms of the master plan amendment uh, within the Cave and Point redevelopment plan, uh, they, we had looked at this previously in a prior application and uh, the same results were here, where they lowered the amount of density, um. Also that the, the major subdivision also alleviates some of the issues with uh, concerning Chapel Ave and who owns and maintains Chapel Ave going forward, which will be more in the city's hands. Um, also that uh, that the proposed development overall is uh, um, in standing with the, the overall goal of um, Port Liberté. And uh, this is just one more phase uh, towards the final completion of uh, this area of Jersey City. Um, planning approves of the application. Of the applications.
All right, thanks, Tim, and uh, Mr. McCann, one other question, you read the engineering report, right?
Yes, I read the engineer, uh, no, the applicant will agree to work with the Jersey City Engineering Department to mutually resolve all of their comments. Also, Tim had some conditions in his uh, staff report, which we will also agree to. Tim, I have my standard request for you, I didn't see it, I apologize until tonight, but can we change that landscaping one to say?
Yes.
Final C O?
Yes, that's understood.
Okay. Um, other than that, uh, Mr. Chair, and uh, what I said stands.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
Mr. Chair, so uh, I'm gonna make a motion to approve first the subdivision, uh, that is case P two one uh, dash one two six, again, this is a motion to approve uh, case number P two one dash one two six, this is a subdivision.
Okay, we have a motion for the subdivision, do I have a second?
Second, okay.
All right, motion and second made for approval of the subdivision.
Vice Chair, Dr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner, Dr. Desai.
Aye.
And Chairman Langston.
Aye.
All in favor, motion passes, staff conditions.
Hey, Mr. Chair, now I'd like to make a motion to approve case P one uh, two one dash one two seven, this is a site plan.
All right, we have a motion for the site plan, for a second.
Second.
All right, motion for approval, uh, made and seconded.
Vice Chair, Dr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner, Dr. Desai.
Aye.
And Chairman Langston.
Aye.
All in favor, motion passes, staff conditions.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I have another motion, I'd like to make the motion to approve case P two one dash one two five, this is the master plan.
Second. Aye, second.
All right.
Vice Chair, Dr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres.
You know, you ain't know what I'm gonna say.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Looks like Jim McCann hit the trifecta, I vote aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner, Dr. Desai.
Aye.
And Chairman Langston.
Aye, uh, Council, thank you for hanging in there, I know it, it took us a while to get to this, but uh, we appreciate it, thank you, we appreciate it.
Thank you, everybody, as always, we appreciate all the time that you put in on these, thank you so much.
All right, thank you, Council.
All in favor, motion passes with staff conditions.
All right, thank you, Tim. Um, Mike, are you okay moving forward, or you, do you want five?
Um, I feel like now might be an all right time to take five. Just because I, I can't get a feeling that next application, you know?
Yeah, I'm not sure, um. Okay, yeah, let's take five, everybody, it's uh, eight fifty-one, uh, we'll be back at eight fifty-six. All right, can we come to order again, everybody? And Kim, did you start that recording again, please?
I actually never paused.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
No worries. All right, so let's go back to item thirteen on the agenda. This case P two two dash zero three two was a preliminary and final major site plan amendment for two fifty eight to two eighty two Sixteenth Street and three eleven and three twelve Seventeenth Street and three oh five Fourth Street.
Good evening again, Chairman Commissioners Donald Pepe. On behalf of the applicant, we are prepared to proceed, and I thank you again for the courtesy of of letting me get better prepared. The application that we're presenting this evening is an application for amended site plan approval. The driving force behind the amendment is some change in the interpretation of the DEP floodwater regulation rules. Whereas we once had an underground parking facility as part of this project as previously approved, that's no longer permitted. So what we're what we're proposing is to bring the parking up to the ground floor level, which will result in a reduction of forty five units with respect to these blocks. The property is part of the Jersey Avenue Park redevelopment plan. It's in the mixed use district. The plan was previously approved in conjunction with an adjoining application. That application has been carried because we have some details to perfect on that. But the overall density for both of these development blocks, if you will, was calculated together. You'll hear more about that from my from my experts. I've asked them to focus on the changes so we can try and move this as long as quickly as possible. I have three witnesses I propose. That's Mike Pucci. That's Dave Minow, and that's Rob Larson. I don't know if they're pulled up yet. But before I do that, this was a notice application back when it was originally listed. I had provided notice and it's been consistently carried through three subsequent meetings to this evening. So Mr. Lampy, I don't know if you're if you're back engaged yet, but I'd ask you to confirm that that you've reviewed them and the board has jurisdiction.
Lampy is always engaged on.
We came back quickly. I'll keep talking while he gets to that. Just a couple of things I'll point out before we get into it. All of the deviations that were previously approved are basically being maintained with this, that we're not proposing any new deviations. With very few exceptions, we are okay with all of the comments provided by planning staff and engineering. There are a couple of exceptions that I think Mr. Pucci will get into as we get further into his testimony. Mr. Lampy.
Evening, Council.
Did you have an opportunity to review my notice package or? It's quite old at this point.
I didn't want to say council. I'm just teasing. Chairman, I am received the affidavit of publication proof of mailing. The matter has been carried several meetings. And it was properly carried to tonight's meeting. All does appear to be in order. We can go ahead and mark it as A one for purposes of.
Thank you.
So we'll jump right into it with Mike Pucci.
Before we do that, I did not see a David or Dave in the attendees, so I don't know.
Dave Minow, can you raise your hand?
Okay, Minow, okay. Okay, we got.
All right, thanks, Kim.
Michael, swear again. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight is going to be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Michael Pucci, P U C C I.
Thank you.
Michael, your license is still current, correct?
That is correct.
Chairman, I'd ask you, he's appeared here many times.
Mr. Pucci, always a pleasure. You are qualified once again.
Thank you. So I guess I will start by sharing a screen. And I will show you the site plan for what is currently before you tonight. And what we have is this front block here is block six zero zero three bounded to the right by Jersey Ave, to the left by Coles. And then behind Coles, going back to Mamba Street here with sixteenth at the bottom and eighteenth at the top, we have what was once block sixty oh four as a straight two hundred by four hundred foot block and above it sixty oh five. Previous approvals have bifurcated in a subdivision. This sixty oh four and oh five into now a new roadway running, we call it New Street, between sixteenth and eighteenth. And that forms the easterly edge of the proposed development of the two buildings before you tonight. And on the east side of that road that has previously been approved is the park, which was opened with a dedication several months ago. The recently completed park, the Cole Street Park, which is part of the whole project. In the block sixty oh four and five development out here to the left, this is what we are here tonight for with, as Mr. Pepe indicated, a minor deviation as a result of flood hazard regulation changes since the initial flood hazard approval granted. The initial flood hazard approval in the initial building here had parking beneath the building. The last time we were before this board, we got an approval for this building, but in this location right here, what I'm showing and it's screened back, but this says ramp up level two used to say ramp down, and there used to be basement parking behind or beneath this entire development that is no longer permissible. So this ramp has been reconfigured to go up from the street level. And just to modify a slight thing that Mr. Pepe said in his introduction, all the parking has been moved from the ground floor, most of it up onto the second floor where there was residential in the past and is now mostly parking. And the architect, Mr. Minow, who will follow me, will describe the internal mechanisms of the building and the various floors and so forth. There is a small amount of parking at the ground level area where you would ramp up to surface parking, stack parking here, but most of the parking is contained within the building on the second level. As for basic engineering design, really nothing has changed from the preliminary approval. And what I will do is actually stop this share for a moment and reshare the old previous site plan. This previous site plan shows basically the exact same thing. Now, the screening of the internals of the building is a little bit different, but we had right here where this used to go ramp down, as I just showed you, that goes ramp up. Still had a ramp up to parking on this first level with some stacker units, and the rest of development is virtually identical to what was there before. There are minor architectural differences from the past. Of course, the architect will present those to you. Now, going back, I will get rid of this and go back to the current plan. That is the wrong current. Thank you. So this current plan from the perspective of engineering, we are still dealing with new infrastructure, a new roadway here, new storm and sanitary sewer systems that will be separate. There will not be a combined system anymore. New water main systems looped around the project, all virtually identical to what had been previously approved with certain minor exceptions. Those happen to be just slight deviations during the construction of the Emerson Lofts project down here, just below us on the south side of Sixteenth Street. From a stormwater perspective, everything is identical to the past. So really, we're only here to discuss the fact from an engineering perspective that parking that was below grade is now above grade. That actually was submitted to the NJDEP many months ago, and we are very happy to announce that just eight days ago, we received our flood hazard permit approving this project. That really sums up all the direct testimony. There are a number of deviations as Mr. Pepe explained, they are all, as he's mentioned, previously approved. There is nothing new with this application. Those deviations will be handled by the planner, but basically, in summary, there are some building height and unit size issues that were previously granted. The building heights are the same. The architect and planner will cover that. Unit sizes are the same or slightly better than before, so the extent of deviation is minimized. The sidewalk width had previously been approved. It's required is fifteen. In this district, it is fifteen with the exception of certain locations such as I'm highlighting here hovering over those. Those are little stoops to provide exterior access to ground floor units around the building. They are identical to what was here before. The number of signs and loading dimensions, those deviations are identical to what was here before. So the end result is a reduction from what was previously approved in these two blocks of five hundred and eleven inches down to four hundred and sixty five.
Mike, you're familiar with the engineering memo that we received with respect to this project back in three eighteen twenty two, correct?
That is correct.
And with respect to, I think, one item, it was item number two regarding the curb radiuses. Did you have any comments with respect to that?
So there were four comments in that memo that I would like to say, rather than just a blanket, we will do everything. I would like to work out those four comments to the satisfaction of the engineering staff. Simply because the number two, as you just alluded to, the comment about curb radii, there is a request from Ms. Wang in the engineering department that has been further modified by an engineer for the adjacent projects, the Emerson project here, who also worked on Cast Iron Lofts in Soho, who met with Paul Russo, your city engineer onsite, and made some minor field adjustments. So I would like to match those field adjustments that were agreed upon, which supersede that memo. There are a couple of comments regarding two inlets up at the north end here. I would just work those out with Ms. Wang. Her comments may not reflect the fact that there are existing utilities that would be in conflict. And then the last one, she had a comment about a recycling plan, which would be handled more appropriately on the architectural plan.
Thank you, Mike.
All right, so Mr. Pucci, we're talking about in the engineering report, item two, item seven, I believe.
I believe it was two, ten, eleven, and eighteen, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so the turn radius is on. The turn radius is.
That is comment two.
The curb, curb radius.
Carb radius.
Sorry, curb radius is two. Okay, so item ten.
Ten and eleven relate to a crosswalk comment that does not, there's a question about a crosswalk in this location up here that I don't have, so I would like to clarify that with Ms. Wang. Eleven deals with the inlets here.
Okay, and what was the last one on the recycling?
Comment eighteen was a comment from Ms. Wang about sanitation handling plan or notes regarding trash and solid waste, which I believe, since it's all internal, those notes would be best served to be placed on the architectural plan.
Okay, understood. No, I appreciate you bringing that up rather than just giving the standard blanket answer. I just wanted to note the numbers for the record. That's all.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have no questions for for Mr. Pucci. Anybody else?
No, Chairman.
All right, thank you, Mr. Pucci.
Thank you, Mike. Like to call Dave Minow next.
Hi, Dave. I'll swear in if you can raise your right hand. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, could you?
Yeah, Mr. Pucci, could you stop your screen share, please? All right.
Much better. Mr. Minow, your license is also current as an architect of the state of New Jersey, correct?
It is. My license is current.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Minow. You're qualified again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dave. So why don't you, and listen again, let's keep the focus to the changes. Thank you, Dave. So why don't you, and listen again, let's keep the focus to the changes. Board has already approved this project overwhelmingly. So if you wouldn't mind taking them through the specific changes.
Sure. Can you all see my screen?
We can, yes.
Okay, um. I'm very happy to. Represent this actually more resilient and sustainable project. Uh, since our DEP review. As Mike mentioned, we've. Moved the parking from the basement level to the second level of the building. And in the long haul, this will be good for our residents in Ford Jersey City. We have, uh, basically the very same architecture. That we had, uh, in the prior scheme. And we also. Have lost in this process, we've lost. Forty-six dwelling units. We had prior approved. Five hundred and eleven. And this application is for four hundred and sixty-five on the two blocks six oh four and six oh five. Block six oh four now has two hundred and eighty-one units. And block six oh five has one hundred and eighty-four units. This is a highly amenitized project. Uh, with over seventy thousand square feet of indoor and outdoor recreation and amenity spaces. So let me go to the crux of the change. This is our, basically our street level plan. Which maintains the retail. On our pedestrian walkway. Connecting new, uh, new street and the park on through to Monmouth Street. And this is a public access walkway. Um, our main. Lobby entrances show here in that pedestrian walkway area. And as Mike mentioned, our main vehicular entry is off of sixteenth street. With an up ramp. Uh, to get to the parking. Uh, we do have some. Uh, ground level units along the front edge of New Street. And Monmouth Street and the park area on the corner. And if you look to the plan on the right, right-hand side of the street. This, this level sits above this first level. And this is our main parking level. The only other space we have on this level. Is a portion of our amenity space. Shown here in the lavender color and this is a, a fitness area in this location. Um, just moving on very quickly, this upper, upper levels have changed very little. In terms of the unit layouts. Um, and this shows the levels five through eleven, level twelve. And our amenitized roof plan where we have actually a pool on the upper level of block six thousand four. But we have active roof decks on all these upper levels. This hasn't changed, uh, from our initial plan. This is a perspective view. From sixteenth street and Cole Street showing the. Park, uh, in the foreground. And this area on the right here is the beginning of our pedestrian walkway moving through to Monmouth Street. You see our upper level amenity deck here. At the third level. And then you see the. Uh, growies up here on the roof deck show indicating the upper level amenity decks. And then lastly, the view that I showed initially. Um, along Monmouth Street. Uh, this is the pedestrian walkway coming from Monmouth Street. Uh, through to the park on the other side. Um, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have at this time.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Minnow. Um, no, I have no questions. Anybody else?
Nope.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Dave. Next witness is, uh, Rob Larson.
I'm Rob Bosrayan. If you swear any testimony you give tonight is going to be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Sure, Robert Larson, L A R S E N.
Thank you.
Mr. Your license as a professional planner is current, correct?
It is.
All right, Mr. Larson, you're qualified.
Excellent. Thank you. So I have a feeling I'm going to repeat a little bit of what already has been said, but just, just for the board's pleasure, um. Again, this is a, an amendment that introduces no new variances than those that have been granted in the past. Um, and again, to, to be clear on the record, we are seeking several. That are just really a continuation of those that have been granted before. As has been stated, we're asking for an additional height. Uh, one story, which is, um. permitted where we have eleven stories where, uh, we had sought and have, uh. Been granted an additional story and we are still seeking that. As, just to back up a second, just to be clear for the board, uh, this is part of an overall, uh. Development for the, it's the. Coles Avenue Park and, uh, includes another block which is not part of the discussion tonight, but in terms of density and permitted, even though we've reduced the unit count. There's eleven hundred and eighty-one units. We are well within the density that's permitted for these two back blocks. And as has been mentioned several times, we're going from five hundred and eleven to four hundred and sixty-five. Um, and these two blocks, um. Are where the current park has been. Actually activated and opened. Uh, all that is part of the density that's permitted and achieved by those activities. Uh, so besides the height, we're also asking for a unit size deviation. Uh, we do have a compliant mix of units, uh, as we had before, and we, we continue to have a compliant mix, but we are seeking. Where the, uh, minimum studio is to be five fifty, uh, six hundred, we have five fifty. Where the minimum one is to be seven fifty, we have seven hundred and where a minimum. Two is to be a thousand, we have nine fifty. These numbers are, uh, the same as they were before and we continue to seek that variance. Uh, we are also, as has been mentioned, we have two blocks here, we have four signs, two are permitted. Makes sense. It's good for getting everybody where they need to go for safe access to the building, but we continue to, uh, ask as we have. In the past for four signs where two are permitted. Uh, as Mr. Pucci mentioned, we're also asking for a sidewalk width deviation fifteen foot is permitted. We have eleven feet at points where. We have those neat little accesses to certain ground floor units. And we're also asking for, uh, a deviation from the loading requirement where, uh, forty by ten is required. We have two, one is thirteen by thirty and one is seventeen. By seventeen. Part of my job as a planner to, is to tell you, I will cite specifically the ordinance sections that we're asking, uh, deviation from. We're asking them in light of a, a C two relief. Uh, so we are seeking C two relief from section, uh, XC four of the J A PRP, which is the permitted height. Section XC seven, which is the. Minimum unit size, section XC nine D, which is regarding the additional setbacks. SectionXE for signage and, uh, section three forty-five dash seventy-eight thirteen of your. Jersey City Land Development Ordinance, uh, which speaks to the loading zone. Um, as I've offered in the past, uh, multiple purposes of municipal and you saw are furthered. Including purposes A, uh, E and I, and, and most notably as well, uh, purpose B, which is to secure. From, safe from flood and fire. So again, as you heard, one of the genesis of this application changing was because we have a flood issue. Um, in terms of permitted activities. So, um, as this board, I would hope, uh, has acted in the past favorably, it's, uh, these variances have been supported by the planning department. Uh, overwhelmingly over the past, uh, several approvals. Uh, we believe that the benefits of, uh, continuing to grant these, uh, variances outweigh any detriment which there, again, I, I, we've acted on this positively in the past. Uh, and I believe I've done my job of really listening, you know, what we continue to ask for. So that's, that's it for me.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Larson. Uh, yeah, I have nothing further, Mr. Larson. Anybody else?
Nope.
All right, thank you, sir.
That really concludes my principal presentation. I would just add there that since the last time the board did hear this application. With respect to the last original approval. The park has been completed, which is, I think is, and that was dedicated by this developer. Uh, just wanted to clarify one point that Rob said, maybe you can second it, Rob. The height of the building as proposed today on this amendment is the same. As the height of the building that was previously proposed, so we're not adding a floor, um, to, to make up for the loss of, of the parking. That's, that's why the, uh. That's why the, the unit count is dropping. And then lastly, there were several comments in the city's planning report about dedicating the public right of way for that pedestrian. Pass through, but I just wanted to confirm, I don't have any problem with those conditions. They've already been satisfied and, and, and that easement for public access has been reported. I have nothing more.
All right. Thank you, Council. Uh, okay, so at this time, let's open it up for public comment. If anybody's here from the public that wants to comment on this application, please raise your hand. Uh, once again, if you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hand.
Mr. Chair, signal public, I move to close the public.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded, public is closed. Uh, Liz, you have anything you want to add that wasn't covered?
Uh, no, I do not. I will just recommend approval with the conditions that were in the staff report, which are the. Typical conditions, um. Along with, um. Uh, ensuring all conditions of the original approval are to be upheld with the amendment. As Don mentioned, some of those things are already, uh, have been executed and are in place. Um, and then also, um, another condition would be. Um, addressing the engineering memo dated. Uh, three eighteen twenty-two, um, but still needing to resolve internally with engineering items two, ten, eleven and eighteen. Um, yep, so staff recommends approval with those conditions.
Okay, thank you. And Council, you're okay with those conditions?
Okay with those conditions.
All right, great. Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P two two dash zero three two as presented to the board tonight.
All right, motion is made and seconded. For approval.
Okay. Um, Vice Chair, Dr. Gonzalez.
Hi.
Commissioner, Dr. Desai.
Hi.
Uh, Commissioner Allen.
Hi.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Hi.
Commissioner Torres.
Hi.
And Chairman Langston.
Um, yeah, and I, and once again, I, same as Mr. McCann, I just want to thank Mr. Pepe for, uh, hanging in there. I know it took a while to get here. Uh, we're here. So thank you.
All, well, it ends well. Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, the only news that I have is Mayor Davis was reelected. If anybody is, uh, is interested.
I, I haven't been watching, I've been very focused on this meeting, but that's good to know. Thank you. Uh, all right, let's, uh. Item fifteen is case P two one dash zero six zero. It's a minor site plan with C variances for twenty-six Perrine Ave.
And I'm looking for John. There we go.
Okay. I don't know if you can hear me. Uh, good evening, members of the board. My name is John Anleyan.
We can, but you're sideways.
All right. Moving.
I love it. Looks good.
Get himself up.
Okay. Well, my name is John Anley and I represent the applicant, John Gerama. This application is on twenty-six Perrine Avenue and, um. It is a, uh, application to build a four-story building with seven residential. Uh, housing units. So the current property is a three-story building. If you, when you look at the exhibits, which will be, uh, shown to you by our three experts, um. I think it's a pretty fair application. It's in the, uh. The zone four A, which is the community mixed use, a district, uh, by the Journal Square at two sixty, uh, redevelopment plan. So the three experts, so we have our, um. Guy Lager Marcinow, he's our engineer. The Joel Ives is our architect and the Catherine Gregory is our. Uh, planner. I'd like to call, uh, a guy like, like our Marcinow first. If you can, I'm sure he's on here because I know he was watching.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking for him. I, I don't see.
It says engineer case fifteen.
Yeah, he's on there, yeah.
All right, and then what was the other one? The?
Joel, Joel Ives, he's the.
Yes, I'm sharing my screen.
Yeah. And the, and our planner is Catherine Gregory.
All right.
So Council, while we're having everybody brought up. I am in receipt of your affidavit of publication proof of mailing. At the opportunity to review it. It does appear to be in order, so we can mark it as A one for the record.
Okay, very good.
How is Catherine Kolek? Is it possible Catherine Kolek?
Should be Catherine Gregory.
Gregory, if you could raise your hand. We'll get you up here with everybody else.
All right.
Did you see her?
Yep.
Okay, go ahead, Council.
All right, well, let's start with our engineer, Guy. You're there, right?
I'm here. Do you hear me?
Yep, we hear you. I just want to swear in, all right?
Just for some reason, I, I don't see me on the screen. Is there a reason for that?
Because we got the presentation showing. I just want to swear you in, all right? If you're trying to testify, you give tonight is going to be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
That is correct.
On the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Guy Lager Marcinow, L A G O, M A R S I N O.
Thank you.
And I'm, uh, practicing at optimized engineering out of Union City and I presented myself to this board numerous of times before.
And Mr. Lager Marcinow, your license is current tonight?
That is correct. It is current in the state of New Jersey.
All right, thank you. You're qualified.
All right, thank you. So, um, I, I prepare, can I?
Go ahead, Guy.
I can go ahead. I hear commotion in the back. I just don't know if this related to me. Okay, um. I'm preparing, uh, I prepared, uh, civil plans for this project. At twenty-six Perrine Avenue. And, uh, with the current, uh, state of what we tried, uh, to do is we only have two variances. Uh, which were with a setback for the rear and side yards. And the front yards were matching the adjacent properties in, uh, on both sides. Uh, you can see that on the next sheet, but I, just keeping the sheet in focus. Uh, right now, there's a new, right now, currently there's a new building adjacent to, so this base is pretty much this building is almost boxed in. If you go to the, am I in control of the slide, Joel, or I don't know, do I have to actually move it? To go to slide two or three, go to slide three. Can we go to slide three? Okay, so one of the questions on slide three, if we go to slide three, I had gotten a, uh, um. A review by Lichin Wong from JC, uh, Division of Engineering. And in her letter, she had, uh, concerns about this tree. Uh, unfortunately, the tree and it's, uh, it would be very difficult to, uh, maintain this tree in the construction of this new building. So, uh, I had proposed, uh, replace it with a new, uh, red maple tree, uh, from the front. Uh, we will be. In, in total provisions of the Jersey City forestry, uh, standards, uh, for sure. And that was obviously in my details in, uh, the plans. As far as there is no parking proposed here, uh, obviously with the, uh, Journal Square redevelopment, we don't need any parking. And, uh, so the tree will pretty much be, pretty much a new tree, be pretty much exactly where that tree is currently, but the construction would not prevail. Uh, the survival of this tree for sure. Um, going on to other matters which was, uh, concerned is the, the utilities. Obviously, the utilities would have to be, um. Replaced and new, uh, from the, the existing ones that are there and, uh. And we have also proposed, which, uh, was not part of this full set, but we mentioned, we will be providing storm detention in the rear. Uh, at the, it's really condensed because you only have a five-foot setback, but we'll be able to put some, uh, cistern down there to collect the water before it goes to the streets. As far as any lighting is concerned, we're going to provide the minimum amount of lighting. Uh, that is there, uh, just for either rear for any type of, of, uh. You know, walking the dog in the rear yard or the front yard with any type of lighting in the front. As far as, um, if we move to the next slide, I think we moved to the next slide, which is, uh, go to four. As far as, uh, if we move to the next slide, I think we moved to the next slide, which is, uh, go to four. Um, again, we just, I'm just reiterating, there's only two variances, there's three variances, but two variances are more concerned, which, which we really can't contain the existing one, the existing houses really are lot line as well. So we're providing that as well as the existing house is, uh, also, uh, also out of the, the requirements for rear yardage. So both of them is currently unconforming right now, and we're going to continue the unconformity of that, uh, for those two variances. The third variances is discussed lines should be done by the architect as well. So, um, moving on to the, uh, the only other thing would be that we're going to be in conformance with all the utilities that are on the site and obviously all the redevelopment. I also did work on the project next to the adjacent property as well as all utilities that will come into the street will not be in interference with any other utilities. For example, I mean, I have, uh, the sanitary line coming ten feet from the water line that is going to be maintained also from, uh, the adjacent properties, uh, sanitary lines, which is not shown there, but, uh, I was familiar with the site. As far as any curbs in the sidewalk, all that's going to be replaced as well as going to the adjacent, you know, since we'll be making new utilities in the street, the new asphalt as well within the conformance of the property lines that are there. I think that pretty much does my, my civil, uh, my civil presentation right now. Is there any, anything else for me? Uh, ask me, go ahead.
The, uh, the only question I would have, uh, the existing house, is that being torn down?
Yes, that would be torn down. And if you look, if you can look further on the architectural plans, you'll see pretty much a new house with a new basement. On the elevations, the, the house, this is house is pretty much, uh, in pretty much rotten shape. Uh, there's no way you can put another floor in that. Uh, and any, again, getting back, because I do a lot of more of this type of construction in Jersey City and, uh, in the demolition, the adjacent property to the right of it that, since they are attached buildings, and I've also done work on Perrine Street, a lot of these buildings have, for some reason or another, have attached walls to it. Those walls will obviously be secured prior to the removal of this building. The, obviously, the new building on the left, that's not an issue. The building on the right of this, um, uh, would be an issue. Uh, but we will be in accordance of everything, all the standards that are said, the I B C, uh, in securing that building prior to construction, obviously, uh, any repairs that were required, that would be performed as well.
Okay, great, thank you. Uh, anybody else have any questions?
No.
Chair, if I may?
Sure, go ahead, counsel.
Sir, you worked on the new building on the left of this photograph?
I have that. Was that the engineer, I, engineer I was doing there for mostly, uh, believe the sprinklers and some of the minor, uh, utility works that was there. Okay, as well as the face of the building, there were some issues. I'm not the engineer of record for that, but I have worked on that, but.
Was that building attached to the house, the subject house?
No, it was not.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else, any questions? All right, thank you, sir. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'd like to next call, uh, Joel Ives, the architect.
Hi, Joel, swear in, right? Hello, yeah. You swear any testimony you give tonight is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Yes. For the record, could you state and spell your name, please? Uh, Joel, J O E L, Ives, I V E S. Just to qualify myself, I'm a licensed architect in good standing, uh, as I have been for more than forty years. I'm licensed in ten states. I've testified before many, uh, planning boards and zoning boards in the state of New Jersey. And I'm a past president of the Architects League of Northern New Jersey.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Ives. And that license, uh, one of those ten states is New Jer, New Jersey.
Absolutely. That was my first one.
I appreciate that.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Uh, that's a good run, forty years. Uh, you're qualified.
Yeah. So I'd like to do, see if I could go all of a sudden, oops. My screen seems, oh, there it goes, okay. So I wanted to go to this, uh, this slide because it really explains the entire project very well. You, you can see the yellow building, uh, is our, is our proposed building. Even though it's a new project, we're still going to be twelve feet lower than the building that's kind of encapsulating us on two sides. And, uh, so we're kind of like an average between the building to the right of us as you're standing on Perrine Avenue and a building to the left. And, uh, we feel it, it kind of fits in nicely in the space. And, um, this, I think, gives you an idea of the context of the neighborhood. The building on, uh, the building that's adjacent to us, the large building is, uh, front on Baldwin Avenue. And that street has, um, a larger right away, which afforded it the opportunity to put in a higher building, since we face on Perrine Avenue, the right away is only forty feet, which limited us to a forty-foot high building. So our roof is forty feet. So now I'm going to skip through these engineering drawings. Yeah. So this is, uh, on the lower part of this drawing, you can see the first floor plan. You, uh, our concept is you come into the building, there's a vestibule, we're providing a large, uh, package room because, uh, it's part of my life right now to get lots of packages. And we'll have a buzzer system that people will be buzzed when packages or deliveries are made. Go down a corridor, we have an elevator. And then in the rear, we have, um, uh, one apartment and, uh, a small community room. Uh, well, all of our seven apartments are between six and seven hundred square feet, and they're all one bedrooms. So it's not really a large project as compared to the things you've been looking at this evening, but we think it fits nicely on this site. The, the disadvantage in dealing with these small sites is you need two staircases, so it always becomes a challenge. So, uh, to squeeze them into the building, you need two means of egress. So we have the two staircases and the elevator, and they both go down to the lower level basement. And one of the staircases will allow you to get out back to the front of the building. And, uh, there, there'll also be a trash room down on the lower level, so all of the trash and recyclables are kept on site, and they're just brought out on collection days. We have an elevator machine room and some community space on the lower level. When we get up to the second and third floor, which is the top of this sheet, we also, again, we have, um, one-bedroom units, one facing the front of build, the, the front street, and one facing the rear. And the only difference with the fourth floors, uh, the fourth floor has access up to the roof where we're proposing to, you know, use the roof to our advantage and enhance these apartments by having spiral stairs going from the apartments up to the roof level, or you could take the stair as an alternative. So this is a roof level. It's, uh, it, we see it as an opportunity to provide some fresh air, outdoor space and and make nicer apartments, basically. All of the photographs on the bottom here are the, you know, adjacent buildings. The, the one I think that's more important is the, the two photographs on the right, that's the, the building that was just built recently, uh, I think it was finished about a year ago. And that's on, uh, faces Baldwin Street, but it's a pretty neutral, um, facade and, um, and, and, uh, we, we, one of the things we want to do is to somewhat not try to create something that's going to stand out and, and be at odds with that larger building, but we want to use the same materials as the Baldwin Avenue building and just arrange them differently, so it'll kind of be in harmony with that, with that building. This is a cross-section that, that shows the, uh, the four levels of apartments with the basement and then the penthouse up above, so you can get up to the roof deck. And so this, this is the front elevation. We haven't labeled all the materials, but I'd like to, uh, testify as to what we have in mind. We want to use a red brown brick, which will be, um, similar to the Perrine, uh, Avenue, uh, building. Use a smooth stucco surface, uh, duranatic dark bronze aluminum frames. And that's basically it. We want to keep the material simple. We, we have a hand, um, a translucent, um, guardrail here, so people have a little patios, which I think would be nice. And you can see in this building here, the existing building to the right um, is lower than us and the one to the left, which we happen to have the drawings of that building, the height of that building is actually fifty-eight feet. Where we're about twelve, we're going to be about twelve feet lower to the height of our building. So it steps down. I think it's, it's, it's a nice, um, design to fit between a higher new building and a lower old building. It just seems to fit in nicely with, then, it's not going to be any numbers or or, or signs on the outside, except two numbers, that'll be twenty-six. And that, those two numbers are just, are just the street address. And, uh, that'll be in accordance with the sign ordinance. And, uh, it'll, it'll be a subtle thing. You know, we don't have retail on the first floor, so we don't need to do anything that's going to stand out too much. So these are the rear elevations. It's, it's the same. Uh, basically, we're taking the same materials that I just mentioned, and we're reconstituting them for the rear elevation. And that's, that's pretty much the architectural presentation. Let me just go back to.
I, I, Joel, would just, uh, mention the, um, this, the floor-to-ceiling height, uh, aspect of this.
Yeah, the, the floor-to-ceiling height, we didn't want to really make the building higher than we, we had to. And this one, one thing, one of my pet peeves over, uh, you know, zoning requirements and floor-to-floor heights is architects have to design floor-to-floor heights with a seven-inch riser. So, so anytime you have a floor-to-floor height, you got to, it has to be divisible by seven inches. So that's why we decided, you know, it was to do something that would be a little less than what the zoning requires. I think we have eight foot ten, where nine foot six was, uh, you know, required for ceiling height, an internal ceiling height. And since there's no retail on the first floor and, and the spaces are small on the first floor, we felt we didn't have to raise the building up a couple more feet on the first floor just to be in sympathy with every, everything else in the community and what's going on around it. We want to keep the building as low as, as we could. So we, we, we stuck with the eight foot ten a clear height from floor to floor, and then with the floor thickness and everything else, the rises and the stairs work out perfectly at seven inches.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Ives. Um, the only question I have on the the second to fourth floor, um, being that the elevator is in the center, you have your two, uh, residential doorways. And then you have your stair regresses on the end. Is there an area of refuge there?
There's no real, uh, area of refuge except on, you know, and the, the stair landings are oversized, basically. So technically, that's what you have, where the area of refuge is.
Okay, so that.
This is a weird space. You know, it's right here.
Okay.
Merry image on the other side, yeah.
That would cover your area of refuge for.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, very good. Uh, that's it for me. Anybody else? Any questions? Nope. All right, thank you, Mr. Ives. We appreciate it.
I'd like to call Catherine.
Our planner.
I haven't stopped this year. Okay, Catherine, I'll swear you in, all right? Do you swear any testimony you give tonight is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Yes, Catherine, K A T H R Y N, Austin Gregory, G R E G O R Y. My business address is ninety-six, number Plaza, number three fifty in Fort Lee, New Jersey.
Thank you.
Mr. Gregory, good evening. Uh, always a pleasure. Your license is current tonight in New Jersey?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. You're qualified again.
Hey, what do you think, Catherine?
What do you think? Um, good evening, board members. We're here tonight seeking, uh, what I consider to be some de minimis variances for a site plan, uh, site plan application, excuse me, for multifamily development. I'm going to actually share my screen now, because I would like to go back to one, one of Mr. Ives's slides, which I have on my screen. Great. Um, so we're here seeking three variances tonight, um, and as you all know that there are two types of variances. One would be in cases hardship, which is C one, which has to do with the situation affecting a piece of property. Um, and the C two is basically rooted in the purposes of zoning and the benefits of variance outweighed the documents. I would honestly say here, I think we have a flexible C one-two, C one, C two situation. Um, and I'll get to that in just a moment as I speak out into the variances. Um, the first variant that we're seeking is for the rear yard setback. Thirty feet is required, and we are proposing five feet for approximately half of the building, which then extends to thirteen. And as you'll see here, uh, now I'm, I'm pointing on my screen with my cursor, and I'm looking at, uh, the yellow building, which is our proposal. We have a five-foot setback right here. And as you can see, and as Mr. Ives described, um, it's very difficult on these smaller lots uh, to actually sometimes build these developments because of the egress and the fire stair requirements of the code. As you can see right here, what you have, um, this long rectangular piece right here on top of the building, that's actually the stairs. So as you can see, that kind of causes us to push part of the building out, but then we tried to pull it back, where we actually have a thirteen-foot setback, which is interesting because it sort of follows the larger building that was approved on Baldwin here uh, with this little, uh, sort of jogging type of, um, arrangement, if you will. Um, just as well, we need a side yard setback. And we are actually required to have three feet, but none as proposed. Uh, but as you can see here on this side of, you know, there are really no setbacks between these buildings. So we're kind of, we have an established development pattern, and we're sort of keeping that. Um, and to that end, there are no windows on this side of the larger building which has just been built. Uh, probably with the anticipation that there would not be windows because that's the existing condition built today. Um, the last of which, which was mentioned, uh, later by Miss for Oz, was about the floor-to-ceiling height. Uh, nine feet minimum is required, but we have chosen eight feet, eight inches. Um, again, I believe that this is de minimis. I think it leaves the intent of the ordinance. Uh, we are trying to keep within the height guidelines that still provide the four stories in this building. And as I just started before, like this is on the building, and there's certain structural elements that need to go into that. Um, but I do believe that an eight-foot-eight height is sufficient, um, you know, for a habit of a space. In terms of the positive criteria, I believe that we do promote the purposes of the new law. Well, I'm going to stop sharing. Um, the first of which would be purpose A, which talks about promotion of the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. And the reason I say that is there was a case called Encre서 v. Cecili, which found that promotion of a state policy was bound to promote the general welfare. And the reason I say that is that one of the intensive bestie plans is for development and redevelopment to happen in areas with existing infrastructure. And that's what we have here, with existing roads and, and, excuse me, and existing water and existing sewer, et cetera, et cetera. I also believe you promote purpose I, which talks about promoting a desirable visual environment. Um, obviously, when you took a look at the existing photograph, existing conditions photograph, excuse me. Um, you know, the building probably left a little bit something to be desired. Uh, and as Mr. Ives described, he's really taking the efforts to sort of incorporate that new building into the architecture of our building. Uh, so that hopefully, maybe down the road, when, you know, the rest of that area starts to be developed of the intent was of the development plan, um, that it will take into account that architecture. So I think we are improving the aesthetic of the site. In terms of the negative criteria, I don't believe there's any substantial detriment to the public good by allowing the variances that we're proposing. Um, there are existing conditions today that are extremely similar. I talked about the side yard setbacks. Um, and I don't believe that the ceiling heights are going to be an issue either, um, to the public good. Um, and I don't believe that the zone heights are going to be an issue either onto the public good. Uh, in terms of no substantial impairment to the intent and purpose of resorting to zoning ordinance. Uh, as we stated at the outset of this application, we are located in the twenty-sixty zero store redevelopment plan. Um, and the purpose of the plan is to foster redevelopment in a zero store area. We are redeveloping here. And the purpose of zone four A, which is the multi-family low-rise zone, which is what we are in. Um, it continues the existing pattern of mixed land uses and building types while providing for increased height limits and floor loss. Um, they also, under the objectives, under land use, uh it states continue efforts to stabilize and upgrade residential neighborhoods. Um, excuse me, by providing a range of housing densities appropriate to the character of existing neighborhoods. So I believe that we do promote purposes of the general store master plan, sorry, redevelopment plan, redevelopment plan. Um, and I do believe that we need negative criteria, so I would hope that the board would see fit to grant the variances that proposed this year.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Gregory. Um, I have no questions. Anybody else?
No.
All right. Counsel, is that your presentation?
That is my presentation. I mean, rather than just go back to technicalities which you heard from our three experts. I think it's a nice, it's a nice proposal. Uh that, you know, I mean, I know that's a, that's the layman's terms of, of looking at it, but it is a nice project that's going to improve the neighborhood. It's going to look good. It's going to make the neighbors on the block smile. So I think it's a good deal.
All right, thank you, sir. Um, so at this time, let's open it up for public, see if any of those neighbors are here. And uh.
I do see someone in.
If you're here from the public and you'd like to comment, please raise your hand. And if you are. Calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hand. I think that's actually the applicant, correct?
I think it was chairman.
All right, so if anybody's here from the public that wants to comment, please raise your hand. Once again, if you're calling in and you want to comment, please uh press star nine.
Here, seeing the public, I move to close the public.
Do I have a second to close public?
Okay.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Public is closed. Uh, Tim, do you have anything you want to add?
Just that, uh, like the project overall, um. The applicant was uh saddled with hardships that dealt with the individual lot size. Being undersized for the area, also that the redevelopment plan really caters, especially in four A. Can, uh, caters to larger lot sizes. Um, they didn't have this, this luxury in this situation. And uh I think the way they came out uh with their development at the end of the day was uh. Was in line with what the redevelopment plan intended and uh the Jersey City. Um, land development ordinance and the, the master plan. So planning approves of the application.
All right, thank you, Tim. Uh, counsel, I do see uh your applicants hand raised.
Really?
Need to address? Does he want to fire you on the spot? What's going on?
I don't know. Is he, is he gonna, is gonna, my client did?
John Jarama is your client?
He is.
Okay, counsel.
John.
Now he's getting on the screen. Good evening, sir. Sir, you're represented by counsel, so quite frankly, I don't think there's anything for you to say.
Yes.
But then hello.
I just want to say thank you.
Oh, okay.
We didn't vote yet.
Thank you, sir. Um, yeah.
For everybody.
Thank you until after we vote.
He's an optimist.
Okay.
What happens when three weeks or three meetings passes?
Yeah.
All right, I'll entertain a motion then.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion at this time to approve case P two one dash zero six zero as presented to the board tonight.
Second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second for approval.
Vice Chair, Dr. Gonzalez.
Hi.
Uh, Commissioner Torres.
Hi.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Hi.
Commissioner Allen.
Hi.
Commissioner, Dr. Desai.
Hi.
And Chairman Langston.
Hi.
All favor, motion passes.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, uh, members of the board. Uh, one final comment. And I'll reiterate what was said earlier today by a member of the public. Uh, you all deserve a, a, a great deal of uh thanks for the amount of time that you spend. We, uh, every two weeks, month after month, I know you just scheduled another special hearing date. And um you're sort of the unsung heroes of the Renaissance of Jersey City. So uh, most people don't realize it, but you put, I mean, you, I'm on, I'm on a planning board in the town where I live. And maybe once in a blue moon, we will go past ten o'clock at night. But you do practically every meeting, so thank you.
It is.
Thank, thank you for dedicating your time and your effort to making Jersey City a greater place to, to live. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. It's uh totally nice to hear that.
Appreciate.
That being said, um, Cam, the time is nine fifty-eight. Um, I think we can get Clinton Ave in tonight.
Let's do it.
And um if everybody told me, uh, we have a signage application for Tom Lean. Uh, I think we can probably sneak that one in in five minutes.
That sounds good, Chair, Mr. Chair.
Yep, let's do it.
All right, so let's call uh item sixteen. Cam, do you want to uh bring up the other attorneys? I know Tom Lean has one more and also Ben Wine.
Yes, I um, I just can't find Benjamin. Oh, there he is, Benjamin Mark.
Hey, good evening, Mr. Chairman and everybody.
Good evening, counsel. Um. I, I.
So close, counsel.
We're gonna have to carry you. Uh, I do think we can guarantee you, you know. One, two, or three on the twenty-fourth.
So, Mr. Chair, if I, if I'm, if I may, um, and I'm certainly not going to prolong this more than I need to. Um, I do actually have to be in uh rival Hoboken on the twenty-fourth, starting at seven PM. And it is virtual, but, so I would ask either if there's, I, it's a short application. I have two witnesses and it'll be very quick. So if either there's a way to either squeeze in tonight or kind of be right at the beginning at that twenty-fourth, so I have time to jump over to the other Zoom. Uh, that would be ideal.
Um. Cam, what does the twenty-third look like?
And the twenty-third, I'm sorry, I'm unavailable on the twenty-third. I will be on an airplane.
Not a problem. Um, I hope it's somewhere good. Uh, I, Cam, we can put him on first on the twenty-fourth.
Yeah, okay.
Mm-hmm.
All right, thank you, counsel. Let's put you right up front on the twenty-fourth, five uh. Meeting starts at five thirty. We get to you by five forty.
Perfect, I appreciate it. And I'll just ask that our notice be preserved and uh, and our matter be carried.
Absolutely, so uh, let's call case P two one dash one four six is a minor site plan for three thirty-five Palisade Ave. Uh, we're going to carry that to a date certain, um, May twenty-fourth with preservation of notice.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it.
I appreciate it.
Have a good evening.
All right, Cam, we're going to see Tom Lean in a second. Do we want to bring him up for uh, just to carry a, an item for him?
Yeah, I've been trying to bring him up. He actually has two accounts on, so I may have.
He's up. No, no, disappeared. Oh, there he is.
Tom Lean.
Good evening, everyone.
Um, Tom, I think we get your uh, your hotel canopy sign in.
Yes, if we could just quickly squeeze that in, I would appreciate it.
Yeah, we can get that in.
Okay, I'm okay carrying my other matter uh with preservation of notice, please.
Okay, I think we can get you into that second spot on the twenty-fourth, if that works for you.
I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, you got it. All right, so we're going to call case P two one dash zero five three is a preliminary and final major site plan with C variances. The one nineteen Merritt Street, we're going to carry that to a date certain, May twenty-fourth with preservation of notice. All right, thank you, counsel. Um, while you're up, do we want to call your? Actually, no, we have everybody for the other application. Tom.
Okay.
Hang in there, I swear we'll be right with you.
All right, sounds good. Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, let's call case P two two dash zero zero two is a minor site plan amendment for, for two forty-six Clinton Avenue. Counsel, good evening. Thanks for hanging in there tonight.
Thanks to you guys for staying here so late. Um, Peter Chichini for the applicant. Um, I'll just roll right into it, get, get us going here. Um, this is a notice case. Uh, it was noticed for the April twenty-sixth meeting, uh, that was then carried with preservation and notice to today. Um, so if uh, if we can, if Santo could confirm that notice has been uh. Yeah, certi- certification notice has been received.
Thank you, counsel. I am to receive your affidavit of, affidavit of service, proof of publication with respect to the application. Case P two two dash zero zero two, two four six Clinton Avenue. All does appear to be in order. We can mark it as A one for purposes of the record.
Uh, thank you. Um, so the applicant, this is a very uh, simple application. Uh, the applicant was previously approved for the construction of a two-family house on this vacant lot. Uh, under, it was application P twenty dash six. Um, I, since then, the applicant seeks some relatively minor amendments, uh, but no, no more variances, just some amendments to that original uh plan. So we're going to call uh Raoul Cabato as our only witness.
Do you swear any testimony you give tonight is going to be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Do.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Sure, Raoul Cabato, R A U L, C A B A T O.
Thank you.
Mr. Cabato, good evening. Your license is current in New Jersey tonight?
Yes, sir, it's still current.
Excellent, thank you. You're qualified.
All right, uh, so Mr. Cabato, do you want to just quickly go over what the amendments are for this application?
Yes, I'm going to share my screen. Okay. Um, the proposed project is located in, uh, can everybody see the screen, by the way?
We can, yes.
Okay, good, sorry. Uh, the proposed project is located in an R one zoning district. The subject lot is twenty-five feet wide and ninety feet deep and is undersized by Jersey City standards. A version of this project was previously approved by this board. Where he, we are here today to present a revised version to what was previously approved. The proposed structure has not been built. Uh, previously approved was a three-story structure with a, with two, two-bedroom, two-bathroom dwellings and two-car garage. We are proposing a three-story structure, but with two, three-bedroom, two-bathroom uh dwellings. As well as a two-car garage. Also proposed is a one hundred and sixty square foot roof deck with some green roof elements. Um, the proposed structure shall be about three thousand three hundred and forty square feet in area. The previously approved front yard of sixteen point five square feet. Um, and a year, and the rear yard of fifteen feet shall be retained. Uh, the side yards shall now be three foot, one inch on each side. Uh, so on, on either side, it'll be a three foot, one inch setback. Uh, also proposed is a two foot by fourteen uh and a half foot cannon lever uh at the front. Uh, on the second and third floors. Um, all other bulk requirements have been either retained from the, as previously approved or is otherwise in compliance. Including but not limited to the front yard landscaping, as well as the planting of a street tree. Uh, as mentioned earlier, a typical unit shall have um. A typical unit um shall have three bedrooms and two bathrooms. The master bedroom shall have balconies overlooking the rear yard. On average, each unit shall be about one thousand one hundred and twenty square feet. In area. The front facade shall have brick finish base with fiberment cement siding on the second and third floors and a metal panel top. Samples of the proposed finishes can be found on sheet A four hundred. Um, we also have uh additional uh information on the green roof elements on the, on the last sheet. And um, that's, that's my presentation.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cabato. Um, yeah, I have no questions. Anybody else?
No.
All right, thank you, sir. Okay, if you could, please uh stop that. There you go. Thank you.
And that concludes our presentation.
Okay, thank you, counsel. And um, just for the record, um, you know, any conditions, any variances. So in the last application, we'll carry over to this one.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Uh, all right, so at this time, let's open it up for public comment. If anybody's here from the public that wants to comment on this application, please press star nine if you're calling in or just raise your hand. Anybody else from public or anybody from?
Mr. Chair, seeing no public, I move to close the public.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Public is closed. Um, Cam, do you have anything you want to add?
Um, it's a better project. Planning staff recommends approval.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P two two dash zero zero two, presented to the board tonight.
Second.
Second. All right, motion is made and seconded and thirded and fourthed.
All right, uh. Vice Chair, Dr. Gonzalez.
Hi.
Commissioner, Dr. Desai.
Hi.
Commissioner Torres.
Hi.
Commissioner Allen.
Hi.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Hi.
And Chairman Langston.
Hi.
Motion carries all in favor with condition.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, everybody.
Thank you all, seriously.
Thank you. Have a good night. All right, let's call case two one dash one zero nine is a minor site plan with C variances for one fifty-nine Morgan Street.
Good evening, commissioners. Uh, for the record, Tom Lean of Connell Foley, this is a notice case, so I just want to make sure counsel uh has my affidavit.
Thank you, counsel. I am to receive your affidavit of publication, proof of mailing with respect to the application case P two one, one zero nine. All does appear to be in order. We can mark it as A one for the record.
Thank you. Uh, this is a very simple application. Um, the uh Canopy Hotel uh has opened at one fifty-nine Morgan Street. It is located in the Powerhouse Arts District. It is accessible from Marion Boulevard. Um, the uh, the application is for a sign banner, which requires minor site plan approval, uh, as well as variance relief. Uh, si- uh, blade signs are permitted within the redevelopment plan. However, they are limited to ten square feet. Uh, we are proposing a slightly larger one of seventy-five square feet. Uh, the intention of the developer in requesting this is that, since they've opened the hotel, they've noticed that there is some difficulty with people locating. The actual hotel when they're driving down Merritt Boulevard. Uh, there is a series of tall buildings there and sometimes as you're driving down. Uh, it, it just comes right at you, because there's not really any signage identifying the hotel until you get right in front of the building. Uh, so the intent of the blade sign is really just identification and safety purposes. So people aren't stopping up short and trying to pull into the covered, uh, the covered area to drop off their bags. Um, and like I said, the, I think the variance speaks for itself. It's a little bit larger at seventy-five square feet, so it can be seen at a distance. Uh, I do believe that Gordon Gemma is here, who is a representative of the um developer and is actually a licensed planner. But just looking at the plans, I think it's, uh, it's evident what the developer is trying to do. So unless there are any questions, I don't know if there's any need to actually bring him up.
I, I agree. Um, I don't have any questions. Anybody else?
I do not, chairman.
Okay, um. Counsel, just have him hang in there until we vote. Uh, we'll open up public just in case, uh, we need some testimony, right?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Um, all right, at this time, let's open it up for public comment. If anybody's here from the public that wants to comment on this application for one fifty, I'm sorry, one fifty-nine Morgan Street. Please raise your hand. If you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hand.
Mr. Chair, I don't see public. I move to close the public.
Second.
Made and seconded, public is closed. Um, Francisco, anything?
I'm stepping in for Francisco here and he um brought me up to speed on this case. He told me, um, echoing what Thomas said. Um, the uh hotel struggles and the community struggles in locating it. And um, the additional signage is uh needed at this site, so. Um, yep, planning staff recommends approval.
Okay, thanks, Cam.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P two one dash. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P two, one dash one, zero, nine as presented to the board tonight.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for approval.
All right, Vice Chair, Dr. Gonzalez.
Hi.
Commissioner Torres.
Hi.
Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Hi.
Commissioner Allen.
Hi.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Hi.
And Chairman Langston.
Hi, I hope it helps.
Thank you so much, everybody, for hanging in there tonight.
All right, thanks, counsel. Appreciate it. All right, could we have memorialization of resolutions, please?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the following resolutions. I have eleven. First one is resolution of the planning board of the city of Jersey City for amendment to preliminary final major site plan with deviation submitted by Wave Building LLC at Thirty Park Lane North, block seven, three, zero, two, lot three dot one, three. Case number P two, two dash zero, five, one. Second resolution is applicant Plaza Eight and Nine Associates LLC for extension to preliminary. Can you guys hear me?
No, we couldn't.
Now we can.
Now you can. Okay, sorry about that. So second resolution, I think, that cut off there. Plaza Eight and Nine Associates LLC for extension to preliminary and final major site plan approval and interim use approval at two forty-two Hudson Street and three Second Street, rear block one, one, six, zero, three, lots twenty-two and twenty-seven, case number P two, two dash zero, one, eight. Third resolution is in the matter of strictly CBD LLC for conditional use approval for a class five micro business cannabis retailer licensed three hundred and ninety-four at Communipaw Avenue, block two, zero, 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 two. Lot fifteen, case number P two, two dash zero, two, eight. Fourth resolution is case number P two, one dash zero, four, zero. Applicant is Decays Dispensary LLC, address at four, zero, four, Central Avenue, Jersey City, New Jersey, block two, two, zero, one, lot fourteen. Fifth resolution is case number P two, one dash zero, four, one. Applicant local motive, address one fifty-five Newark Avenue, Jersey City, New Jersey, block one, one, four, zero, five, lot six. Sixth resolution is applicant nine, seven, five, Garfield LLC for extension of preliminary and final major site plan approval with deviations. Nine, seven, five, Garfield Ave, block one, nine, seven, zero, two, lot fourteen, case number P two, two dash zero, four, seven. Next resolution is applying in the matter of MMD New Jersey Incorporated for conditional use class five cannabis retail establishment at six fifty-five Newark Avenue, block eight, zero, zero, one, that's four. P two, two dash zero, four, eight. Number eight is applicant Oceanfront Holdings LLC for conditional use approval for class five cannabis cannabis use at one forty-one Newark Avenue, Jersey City, New Jersey, block one, one, four, zero, five, lot eleven, case number P two, two dash zero, four, nine. Ninth resolution is for approval and recommendation of amendments to the Land Development Ordinance regarding definitions for medical and office uses. Number ten is planning board in the matter of Laksmi Mall Academy, U R E LLC at one forty-seven Academy Street, block one, two, three, zero, nine, lot three, case number P two, two dash zero, four, four. And the final resolution I have is in the matter of Durga M A SIP LLC two, three, two dash two, three, eight, SIP Avenue, block one, zero, five, zero, two, lot fifteen through eighteen, case number P two, two dash zero, four, three.
All right, do I have a second, please?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Cam, can we have a roll call on resolutions, please?
Intermute Cameron.
There you go.
God damn it. All right, Vice Chair, Dr. Gonzalez.
Hi.
Commissioner Allen.
Hi.
Commissioner Torres.
Hi.
Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Hi.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Hi.
And Chairman Langston.
Hi.
All right, motion carries all in favor of memorializing the resolutions.
All right, thanks, everybody. Do we need, do we need executive session or are we good?
I think we're good, chairman.
You sure Dr. Desai chuckled, maybe she won't. All right, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment then.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move to adjourn.
Second.
All right, motion and second. Thank you, everybody. Enjoy the rest of your night. And thank you again. Appreciate it.
Right, good night.